Okay, six o'clock and I am going to call the May fifth, two thousand twenty one. Meeting of the Shobor Regional School Committee to order at this time with those who so choose. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, there are no citizens comments tonight. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sure, I move to approve the consent agenda of May fifth, two thousand twenty one, containing the minutes of April seventh, two thousand twenty one, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, and the warrants of May seventh, two thousand twenty one.
Second?
Second.
Mary seconded. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none? Um, we'll start with Leah.
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, um, the first, the next item has to do with the chair update. So this next part, oh, I'm sorry, Lita?
Um, Representative Hogan is in the waiting room for a presentation.
Okay.
Shall I, shall I let her in?
By all means.
And there she is.
Good evening, how are you? So I'll maybe just tee up Representative Hogan why you're here to visit us this evening. And we thank you so much for taking time out of such a busy schedule to join us tonight. So tonight's special for our school committee, we have two members who will be stepping aside after years worth of commitment. Collectively combined, a lot of years worth of commitment to the Nishoba Regional School District. And they have left legacy. They've left an imprint on our district. And I really feel that our district is so much better as a result of the work that these two women have done. And I know that you're here tonight because you're going to basically read the citation from your office. So would you mind doing that? That would be terrific.
No, that would be great. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening. Because when I heard that Elaine San Filippo was stepping down after an extraordinary school year. Students, families, teachers, school staff, administrators, school committee. You know, you've all been stretched to the limit and I, and, and I am truly someone that is deeply, deeply appreciative of the time. And I want to thank you for meeting so many unprecedented demands during this crisis. Serving on the Nishoba School District School Committee has been a capstone to Elaine's years of advocacy for students and schools. I know because I have been on the other end of the advocacy and been very happy to hear from her on all occasions. I can recall Elaine's outreach for more transportation funding. So that money in the district could be spent on education rather than transporting students. In addition to serving as vice chair, I know that Elaine was also a member of the committee's reopening steering committee. And I know what you folks were juggling with the executive office of education with guidance, federal government and health departments. I, I truly cannot imagine what you all went through to get, get here today. So thank you Elaine for your service, for your tireless advocacy on behalf of students in our schools. And I wish to present this to Elaine E. San Filippo in recognition of your dedicated service and commitment to the Nishoba Regional School Committee. From two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty one for the town of Stowe, given by the House of Representatives with sincerest congratulations. Thank you so much Elaine for all of your work. And this will be in the mail to you very shortly. So congratulations and good luck, everybody.
Thank you so much. That was so sweet. Thank you for coming, Representative Hogan.
Absolutely. I can't tell you how much we all appreciate the work that's put in this year. Truly will not be forgotten. Thank you Elaine.
Thank you, Representative Hogan, for joining us tonight. We really appreciate you visiting with us. Thank you.
Take care.
Here, here.
And with that too, I also just want to mention that we have several citations tonight. So Elaine, Representative Hogan, what it was fortunate to have be able to carve out some time to join us tonight. But I would want you to know that we also have a citation here from Senator Eldridge, which is also signed by the, the president of the Senate, Karen Spilka. And so we also have that for you as well. And it's, it's sitting right here on my desk. And with that Kathy, we also have one for you. And I'm going to read it here in a minute. And Kathy, we also have one for you for Representative Killcoin as well. And this will all find its way to you shortly. And so I'm just going to read these. These are the same for both Elaine and Kathy. And it is from the state senate and it says official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends its congratulations to Elaine San Filippo and Kathy Codian. In recognition of your dedicated service as a member of the school committee of the Nishoba Regional School District. And be it further known that the Massachusetts senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the president of the senate and attested to and a copy there transmitted by the clerk of the senate. And it is signed by Karen Spilka, Mike Hurley and James Eldridge. So we will be sure to pass these along to you after the meeting tonight. And that's all I'm going to say at this point in time, but I will speak a little bit more during the superintendent's report. So congratulations Kathy, congratulations Elaine, thank you for your dedication, your commitment, your loyalty, your energy, your perseverance. Your pursuit of excellence for this district over and over again, and your leadership. So we thank you so much. So with that, thank you for kind of stopping the meeting Kathy. And we'd ask that you continue to pursue now the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Brooke. Thank you. So the, the first item under the chairs update has to do with town elections. And I pulled together information about the town elections and the impact on the, the school committee. So this year, the town elections in Lancaster and Stowe will be held before the town meetings instead of later. Lancaster's town meeting is June twenty first and Stowe's is on May twenty third. Stowe's town charter states that if the election is held before the dissolution of the annual town meeting. The said term shall commence and expire the day following the dissolution of the annual town meeting. So all the current office holders are still a member of the board or committee until May twenty third. Those elected or reelected on May eighth will commence their term once the town clerk administers the oath of office. She scheduled this for Monday, May twenty fourth rather later date if an individual is unable to make the twenty fourth. Lancaster has no such provision in their town charter. So the new Lancaster rep can be sworn in as soon as May eleventh and can be seated on the school committee for the May nineteenth meeting. So Elaine will stay on the committee until the new member is sworn in on May twenty fourth. But wait, there's more. The school committee is required to have an annual organizational meeting pursuant to section ten of the regional agreement. This states that within ten days after the selection of membership. The regional school committee shall organize and choose by majority vote such officers as provided for by law and determine their term of office. So that's from the regional agreement. In the school committee bylaws, article three under membership states that a school committee member begins his or her term. According to the rules of his or her town and after taking the, the oath of office for public officials. So that's why we have to abide by the decision of the town of Stowe. To be consistent with our bylaws and to essentially uphold what's in their town charter. Additionally, our bylaw stated in section five, an existing school committee member terminates his or her duties upon the seating of a newly elected member to the school committee or by resignation. So that is sort of what is, is going on. So the, the, the Bolton and Lancaster elections are Monday, the tenth. And the store elections are the eighth, I guess. And so there will, you know, Mike is, is here anyway, so he will be replacing himself. So there'll be continuity there, no problem. But the new rep from Lancaster will be here on the nineteenth, as will Elaine, who at that point will be chairing the meeting. If that's okay Elaine, please say yes. Okay.
So, so plot twist, right? No, so, so kind that, you know, people wrote up these citations, but this is not actually going to be my last meeting. Yeah, so with Kathy rolling off, I would actually not only stay on the committee till the twenty fourth, but be the chair. There are some practical implications for the rest of the committee, however. One is that interim period between May twenty fourth and June second. I won't get into it. I will.
No, no, I've got it right here. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. And then the other would be if you wanted to use this as an opportunity to transition or to set up like a one meeting organizational change. So that you have some continuity before you actually do an official organization, reorganization, meeting, change thing. You could do that as well to build in some transition. Personally, I'm a little concerned about your chair, your vice chair and your superintendent all kind of transitioning at the same time. And what could get lost in the cracks there. But also I'll be off the committee, so it's not necessarily my issue to fix. So just something for everyone else to think about.
Thanks Elaine. So based on what I previously stated, the implications are, and this is, there's some redundancy here. The Lancaster rep can be seated on the school committee for the May nineteenth meeting. Elaine will remain a member of the school committee until the new Stowe rep is sworn in on May twenty fourth. The organizational meeting is required after newly elected or reelected members have been sworn in. So an organizational meeting cannot be held until after May twenty fourth. This, this meeting to, on the nineteenth will be the last scheduled meeting. And the last meeting is May is typically the organizational meeting where the school committee elects officers. And approves the school committee calendar for the upcoming year. So the school committee needs to decide on a date for the organizational meeting. Now, um, the concern, and I think Elaine spoke to this. Is that on May twenty fourth, the school committee will be without officers until an organizational meeting can be held. And so I reached out to Dorothy Presser and to, to speak to her about this situation. So my question for the committee is, is it possible to schedule a school committee meeting for Tuesday, May twenty fourth? After the Stowe rep has been sworn in. And this would get at the, the issue, the gap that Elaine was speaking to. So the other factor in this is that the superintendent's search timeline has the week of May twenty third. As the, the time to do the site visits for finalists. So I think it would be prudent, but the committee will decide to, to schedule a meeting for May twenty fourth. When you'll have your full slate of the, the school committee for the upcoming school year. You will also be able to approve your meeting calendar because you don't have any meetings. We don't have an official calendar. And I don't think we will have one until we have the organizational meeting.
May twenty.
Okay, so hang on. All right, Steve?
Yes, uh, May twenty fourth is Monday. I think you said Tuesday. I think you said Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. That's even better. Okay, so thank you. Monday. Okay, thanks for the clarification, Steve. Better in terms of it gives you more of the week to do the other stuff. Other questions?
Sorry Kathy.
Yep.
You're, are you suggesting Monday or Tuesday?
No, I had the right date, the wrong day because I can't get it out of my head that there's a town meeting on a Sunday.
So you're suggesting Tuesday, the twenty?
No, Steve is right. Monday, if this town meeting is Sunday, the twenty third, is that correct?
Yeah.
Then the Stowe rep will be sworn on Monday, the twenty fourth. And if that were to happen prior to six P M, you folks could have your organizational meeting and just meet for that. Quick and dirty, in and out, elect your officials, your, and, 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 and adopt your calendar. Because if you're staying on track with the timeline for the superintendent's search, then that's going to be a busy week. Get it? Is that right? Is that okay?
I understand that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And I'm sorry for the confusion. Mary?
Just, just to talk about confusion a little bit. So anyone who's working with this little book that we got free in the mail?
Yeah.
M A S C calendar for two thousand twenty one. In May, there is an error. It goes from Saturday, the twenty second to Sunday and calls Sunday, the twenty fourth. Now, I don't know if this had to do with the confusion. But you know, usually you could count on M A S C to have things correct, but it's wrong. So I had to check two other calendars as well as online. And, and maybe you've, maybe you caught this and you saw this, but just be careful of your lives if you're, if you're using this because it's wrong. So you have to cross out and make it right. And I know you.
Thank you, Mary. No, and, and I didn't notice it because everything's on my, my, my digital calendar, but, but good eye. Other questions? Joseph?
Hey, ma'am, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. So the intention here is we're going to set a meeting for the twenty fourth for our reorganizational meeting. And I'm just going to throw this out because there is no requirement that any newly elected representative be immediately sworn in after the election. They can wait a couple of days. So the point I'm making is, is that I think we should set the twenty fourth as the date. And I think it's important that the committee members understand that if the representatives that who are newly elected aren't sworn in and, and, and here at that time. I think it's important that we still go forward with that reorganization. I mean, I think the intent here is to make sure that we're fully, we're fully complimented with our membership. But if for some reason the, we're waiting on the Stowe rep, the Stowe rep cannot or is not able to get sworn in on it before the twenty fourth, six o'clock of the twenty fourth. I, I should suggest that we still proceed with our reorganizational meeting.
I don't think, I don't think that our bylaws allow for that. Once they are sworn in, if they, they have to be sworn in. Now, maybe they're sworn in and can't attend the meeting because they can't make it. That's different than not being sworn in. I mean, I did check with Peter Mello, who is the attorney with Murphy Hessey, Tumi and Lahein that deals with municipal issues. And, because I was concerned about the, the ten day timeline within the regional agreement. He said that is after the last election or the last swearing in. But our bylaws state that we have to have the organizational meeting when everyone is, after everyone is sworn in. Now again, if you're sworn in and you can't attend the meeting, that's a, that's another thing. Rich?
Are you counting on Stowe taking two days? Is that why you're just padding the schedule that we won't be done till Sunday?
I'm not, I'm just going with the information that I have from the town clerk. Who said that she would be swearing people in after the town meeting. She mentioned the twenty fourth. So that's the information that I'm, I'm going with. I don't know if.
Okay.
Lives in the town.
No. I think I got it. I think I got, I think I got the timeline now. So yeah, the, the meeting's on, the town meeting's on Saturday. And the town clerk's gonna swear people in on, on Monday. I got it now. Thanks.
May, Saturday is May twenty second, Sunday's the twenty third and Monday's the twenty fourth. So maybe the date.
Yeah.
In any event, the town clerk said that the twenty fourth is when she would swear people in.
Thank you.
So, um, any other, any other questions? Joseph? And then Leah?
I'll, I think Amy had a question. I can defer to Amy and Leah for everybody asked my question, so.
Okay, um, Amy?
Thank you, Joe. So I'm just, I have the superintendent's search roadmap pulled up. It's saying that May twenty fourth through the twenty eighth, the school committee interviews finalists and visits current districts. May twenty seventh, we are appointing the next superintendent. I'm just, so we're proposing that May twenty fourth, we're going to have an organizational meeting. And then should we all be kind of anticipating a week full of meetings?
I would say, yeah. I mean, this was Dorothy's point as well. But you'll know more when we're going to have an update on the superintendent's search shortly. You'll know more as we get closer to that date, the number of finalists. And I think instead at outset of the search, that if we needed to extend the time for any reason, that, that that could be considered. But at the time we made the roadmap and the plan, we were aware that Stowe's town meeting wasn't going to be until May, the end of May. So yeah, that's my point. It's a, it's a busy week. Now that being said, not everybody on the committee has to go to the site visits. They, and, and I'll, Mary will speak to this shortly. The last time they, finalists came and visited here and we had opportunities to be part of that. So that will get explained, but I would say, yeah, the week of May twenty fourth would be busy.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, while we're talking about meetings, it seems to me like I have no idea how we appoint another superintendent on May twenty seventh without another meeting.
No, you have, but see. Right, but, but at your organizational meeting or even next meeting on the nineteenth, you can, you'll have more information about. One of the things on the agenda for the nineteenth is, is you'll get the, the, be presented with the finalists. So you'll have more information on the nineteenth to sort of gauge the need for additional school committee meetings. But then there'll be other things scheduled along with the superintendent, in line with the superintendent's search.
Okay, so it sounds like.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds like we can, if we needed to, we could still stick to this timeline, even though Stowe's town.
Oh, oh, yeah, but, but my point is that I think it, it would behoove you to seriously consider having your organizational meeting on, on May twenty fourth.
Yeah, hundred percent agree with that. That's my feeling.
Okay, Leah?
Could I suggest that we meet at a later time as I recall my swearing in being around five or maybe even six P M? So that maybe our organizational meeting starts at seven thirty, considering there'll only be, only be two agenda items?
You guys can decide.
I think that that's, I think that's wise because I think that they could get the swearing in ceremony over because she won't be the only one. There'll be multiple people.
But you can go individually. I mean, perhaps if the town clerk knew of our special circumstances, he might be willing to do the school committee rep individually.
I absolutely.
That to the, the, well Elaine as the, as the vice chair and also as one of the Stowe representatives. Perhaps you could have that conversation with Linda?
Yeah, I can do it.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure Linda will, will do that for us. I'm not the least bit worried. I think it's probably more a process issue for her to make sure she's got the election finished.
Any other questions? Joseph?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. And again, I don't want to belabor this and I may be dwelling on a very moot issue here. But I'm having a hard time understanding the interpretive process here in regards to establishing this meeting. And the, the necessity of waiting on a particular individual to be sworn in. So if I understand what the chair is saying, you're saying that we, we are prohibited, we are enjoined from actually proceeding with a reorganization. If under the circumstances, one particular member of the committee has not been duly sworn in at the time of our organizational meeting. I, I'm having a hard time getting my head around that. How, what, what are we looking at that would? Is that, first of all, is that, is that a correct interpretation of the chair's opinion on this?
This is from the regional agreement. My two sources are the regional agreement, section ten, organization of the district school committee. And also in our bylaws. What I'm saying is that to have your organizational meeting, the purpose of the organizational meeting is because you're seeding new members. And everyone should be involved in the selection of officers and the acceptance of, of a, of a meeting calendar. And so the, what it says is you have ten days to do this after the last person is sworn in. Why would you take ten days? I think that we have special circumstances. We need to act expediently. But to exclude someone who has been elected but not sworn in because of the, what is in their town charter. I don't think is consistent with the, the spirit of, of our bylaws and, and the regional agreement.
Thank you, ma'am chairman. I, I think, and again, I don't want to belabor this. I think it comes down to just a question of interpretation. And you're looking at the regional school agreement, and I did read that provision in the regional school agreement. Struck me as being that that was the provision that was placed in there for the creation of the district committee, not for the continued organization and administration of the committee. Because I'm looking at policy B D A and it doesn't talk about anything about ten day waiting for it. I, I guess my point is, is that I, I'm not sure that I agree with the interpretation of the chair in this, but I'm certainly not going to belabor the point. And I, I'm sure the representative from Stowe will be here timely. And but I'm just thinking in that bizarre happenstance where they're not here, it just seems incongruent that, that, that one individual should, should in fact, you know, enjoin the ongoing administration and business of this district. So I'll just see what happens on the twenty fourth.
Mary?
Just to follow up somewhat on what Joe just said. In, in prior years, the three towns have had town meetings in a similar timeframe. And then last year, COVID kicked out every, every, you know, every kind of normalcy in so many ways. And so that was one of the reasons that, that town, the towns and, and Stowe went to a, a, a different timing. Now, all these machinations we're going through have to do with that fact that Stowe's town meeting is so much later. And not in the timeframe it had been before in conjunction. They don't have to, in fact, it's better that they're not the same day. However, the same week would be nice, so it doesn't put us in this position. Because I can see that we would have to plan for this going forward. And, and that this could, this whole scenario could just repeat itself. So that's something that, that perhaps the Stowe representatives could, could talk about. Or maybe this is a tri-town issue, you know, in terms. Um, issue, you know, in terms of coordination. But certainly, all that we're going through, and as you said, Kathy, we're in very different circumstances right now. Has to do with the discrepancy uh of of one town. I'm not blaming Stowe. I love Stowe. Um, and um, but I'm just saying that that's that's what we're going through. And I hope that we don't have to go through this again, that we planned for this, so we don't find ourselves just repeating this.
So what's operative for me in our bylaws is that the school committee member begins his or her term. According to the rules of his or her town and after taking the oath of office for public officials. So the rules of the town is that um elected or reelected officials do not get sworn in until after the dissolution of the town meeting. So that's what I'm looking at. Um, and again, this is special circumstances to, you know. In 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 many areas, but my recommendation would be that um we you don't have to vote on this uh tonight. Um, this is information only, but my suggestion would be that um this be on the May nineteenth. Um, agenda and um then you can uh have your vote at that time. If there are no objections. Any other questions or comments relative to um the organizational meeting of the school committee? Amy?
Are we bound to have a meeting on the nineteenth? Like, can we?
Yeah, we get the scheduled regular meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
And there's stuff you guys have to do on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Getting the, that's the meeting at which you'll get the um, the list of the finalists and and, you know, have a sense of um the schedules that probably.
Okay.
Rich?
Uh. I'm curious, can we just push this to the Wednesday and then we wouldn't be so time crunch? Does it crush our timeline? Forgive my appreciation for. What it means for the superintendent search, but what if we just had it a normal meeting on the twenty fifth? Is that what is that the? The Wednesday or does that kill what we need to do? Um, or twenty sixth, I'm sorry. Does that crush what we need to do for the superintendent search? Um, Mary?
Do you want to respond to Richie? Want me to? Mary, you Mary, you're muted.
Good. Oh, okay. Um, so. We we were planning on having um and coming back to school committee in in the charge of. Having between three and five finalists to present to school committee on the nineteenth. And and I have to say that the sooner that we're able to bring you um those uh those finalists uh for you. Um, the better to be able to conduct the 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 um the site visits. So it seems as though from my point of view, we should, we should keep the nineteenth. I realize that people on.
Talking about the organizational meeting for Monday, the twenty.
Okay. Okay.
Instead of having it on the twenty fourth, have it on the twenty sixth.
So I don't, yeah, I don't see, yeah, I don't see that that makes a a big difference in terms of the screening committee.
But what about that being the week when you were scheduling site visits?
We don't have them.
Committee on board?
Well, Dorothy Presser is wonderful and she parcels out information. As we as needed to us. So some of the questions you're asking about in terms of um site visits and the scheduling of that. We don't have that information yet. I mean, I can, I can give a little update on what's been going on. Um, but we don't have that. We're not there. And and as I say, she does an excellent job, but she passes out. The information that we need, and that's all that we have.
So.
So I could guess, but I, you know, we want to hear from her.
So we have some time. There's a regular, you have some time regularly scheduled meeting on the nineteenth. So one of the recommendations is to have an organizational meeting on Monday. Um, the twenty fourth. And that would, that would have the rest of the week free to see the things associated with the superintendent search. Uh, the other suggestion is just to have a regular meeting on uh the 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 Wednesday, the twenty sixth. And I think that um there is time and perhaps this ought to be an item for discussion and vote on the nineteenth. So if we could add that. Madam Vice Chair to the agenda on the nineteenth with some other stuff. Okay. All right, thank you. So um if there are objections, I'm gonna move to the next. Uh, item, which is an update on the superintendent search and Mary.
Alrighty, so I would say that the work of the screening committee is well underway. Uh, as you know, there are fourteen members, three of whom are our school committee. Um, and Dorothy Presser did uh gave us the orientation that was on April twenty sixth. And whereas that was an open meeting, all of our meetings subsequently are in executive session. And completely, as we know, we understand executive session, um completely confidential. So we have uh begun the review process of applications and um we met on May fourth. We have the the next stage is that Dorothy will begin um setting up interviews and we have May tenth to the thirteenth. Um, and then the seventeenth to conduct interviews. And none of this is is public at at this point. Um, and then um May eighteenth. We may not, we may need to meet, we may not need to meet. However, we were aiming to have uh our the group of three to five. To present on May nineteenth to you. Um, I can also like to say as as chairing this group, this is, there is high level of preparation on the part of every single member. Um, on this committee. And I also think uh preparation and participation. It is a a a great committee. And um, and I, so I'm I'm really confident in the work that the screening committee is doing. And so that's about all I can say right now.
Thanks, Mary. Any questions for Mary at this point? Okay, seeing none. Um, thank you so much, Mary, and thank you for your leadership and working uh with um. Dorothy Presser and the and the screening committee. Um, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of organization and um it it. And and yet it's it's a very exciting time um for the district and I.
It is.
A really incredible group that you have there and on your screening committee. So thank you.
And I and I say, I thank you for that. And I do want to say about Dorothy Presser, she is uh just an excellent consultant and she's doing a fabulous job. Um, and so I wasn't being critical. I'm just telling you the truth about how she gives out the information.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. All right, uh, the next item I have is um. Teacher and principal appreciation. This week is teacher appreciation um week. And it's national, there was, I don't know what the date was, National Principal Appreciation Day, which I just want to mention, they did not have when I was a principal, but I'm not bitter. Um, anyway, I do want to say on behalf of the school committee, I want to express. Um, just the utmost gratitude and appreciation to all of our teachers and our principals. Um, I I I wanted to say something um. Um, significant, but there just are not enough words of thanks and praise that would do justice to the caring and dedication. Um, that all of our teachers and and principals have shown this year. Um, their hard work and commitment were just critical to getting our students and parents through a very challenging year. So I want to thank them uh personally and on behalf of the committee. And I hope everyone has a wonderful summer. I hope you have a summer. Because last summer was like not the one's ideal summer, but thanks so much and have a great. Um, uh, end of the school year. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to make any comments relative to teachers or principals.
I'm going to in the superintendent's report.
Very good. Thank you, Brooke. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna start there, actually. Uh, you're right. I think Sunday was National Principals' Day. I think it's always May first. Um, and you're right, it wasn't, there was no such day when I was principal either, and I'm not being a liar. But we want to thank our our principals. I'm gonna just make a couple of comments and then uh Dr. McGuire is going to. Uh, we want to extend a note of appreciation to all of our principals and teachers for their their ongoing commitment to our school district. Uh, this year has just been a particularly challenging year. And our principals and teachers have continuously worked to pivot wherever necessary, wherever it was needed. And um they always did it with such a high level of professionalism and positivity and a can-do attitude that you just can't even put into words. Um, the additional work that it took, they they had to consistently readjust with their efforts, readjust their curriculum, readjust their lesson planning. Readjust schedules. Oh, my gosh, I can't tell you the number of times schedules were readjusted throughout the course of the year. Um, and and it is moving in between the teaching and and learning models, between the remote learning, the hybrid, the the full return. And you know, I mean, it feels really good to be where we're at right now, but my goodness, what a collective challenge this year brought to us. Um, our principals have just navigated these incredible times with grace, dignity, and and the best interest of staff and students at the forefront of every decision. Um, we're fortunate to have the very best in our schools for principals and teachers. And we thank them for everything that they do. Every one of them has worked tirelessly. And and you're absolutely right. This has started since the the infamous March thirteenth date, when it all started to go down. Um, so we want to thank them uh and and their commitment uh for the to the children of N R S D. Uh, it's just been valiant. I I think so much courage, uh so so much boldness, uh so much ingenuity, um and innovativeness. Creativity and relearning. I mean, us for teachers who have never experienced this kind of thing. The amount of the learning curve that our teachers had to take was just phenomenal. And um and and the same thing with the principals and the meeting, I, you know, and then I'll then I'll turn this over to Dr. McGuire, but the meetings. We had a a so many weeknights, so many weekends, Saturday and Sundays, we're trying to pull everything together. And I am just so proud of our principals and our teachers in our school district. This is just an amazing school district and um I think we just had, we still managed to travel that path, that pathway of excellence. In spite of all things this year. And so hats off to our principals and teachers for Principals' Day and Teacher Appreciation Week. So with that, Dr. McGuire, I know you just wanted to make a quick comment or two as well.
I think you said it all, um superintendent, but um so thank you. But no, certainly I I echo all of what um you and Sherwin Codyanne. Had to say, you know, I've had an opportunity to get around to a few of the schools too this week, you know, and seeing how. The changes that have gone on in all of our schools from just the amount of signage and the amount of tables and the amount of spacing. Um, the amount of times where a teacher has had to pivot and say, well, we can go outside, we can go under the tent and, you know, bring your jacket and. Um, you know, the need to pivot and the need to make changes. And we go back to last, you know, a year ago, last March, when we were just creating enrichment programs to. You know, the multiple models we were required to create. Um, and just hats off to the teachers who still continue to participate in all of our professional development, teacher evaluation. Because that's all changed and the platforms have changed. But, you know, I know we're all walking out of this with um a variety of new tools and our toolkit. And those those are tools that we did not get in teacher school. So hats off to uh to everyone in the district for just a tremendous year and and being able to be flexible. So. Um, thank you very much.
I would have to agree with you too in your last statement, uh you know, in spite of so much darkness, in spite of so much challenge, in spite of so much. It was a tremendous year. I I would I would echo that. So with with that, then, um, I think Dr. McGuire, if you want to speak to Summer Academy and Summer Academy Newsletter and uh the K. Uh, if we can just go through the superintendent's report, that would be terrific.
Sure thing. So we're just, um, the Teaching and Learning Department is just, we're just now finalizing all of our plans for our Summer Academy, which I've mentioned before. Um, oftentimes, um, it's uh some remote or some sometimes we travel off campus to some workshops. This year, we all um all virtual. Um, it's gonna take place immediately after the school year when it ends for students in the the first uh few days, right after the end of the school year and the final week of June. Um, a variety of professional development opportunities for teachers, faculty, staff, that's really focused on the the S E L. Uh, the diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as some content and discipline um based in specific offerings. To continue to support our teachers um and our students in the classroom. Um, that focus is really continues to be on social emotional learning. Um, as we look ahead to the work we're doing in diversity and equity as outlined in our district improvement plan. Um, that we that we do plan to carry forward for an additional year, given this year's focus and kind of pause with the pandemic. So we're gonna outline that focus in the the district improvement plan for you folks at our next meeting as we review that um annually anyway. Um, and then we'll be able to talk about some of the tweaks that we're making in that to continue to be able to support. Students and teachers coming out of remote and hybrid learning into the new year. So we've created a newsletter. Um, from the Teaching and Learning Department for this year's Summer Academy, and it can be accessed at that link in the report. Uh, and where we uh highlight a variety of the offerings that will be in this year's Summer Academy. So please check it out.
Great, thank you. I'll just take the K to twelve, uh just to note that we are fully back uh with full return um at this point in time. Um, I would say the vast majority of our children are back on campus. We have a sliver of uh our student population that is still uh on full remote, will remain on full remote until the end of the school year. At this point in time, we are not planning to have full remote for next year as an option, as an individual school district. The commissioner is encouraging that we do not run uh full remote academies next year, that it's basically back to business as usual. Uh, that's what he's anticipating. However, we have learned, if we've learned nothing else this year, we've learned that we can pivot on a dime. So we'll see how the summer plays out and and uh take it from there. But right now we are back um as full as we can possibly be. Uh, Dr. McGuire, do you want to take M C A S?
Sure. So as it relates to Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. So as reported by the Commissioner of Education and Desi uh last week in our meeting. Um, to to be official uh and clear, there is no opt in um or opt out for any uh M C A S testing. The testing is state and and federally mandated. So I wanted to be clear about that tonight, because there are, there are a lot of questions regarding that. So just to point out that Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty nine, Section one. Does mandate that all students in the tested grades, that's grades three through eight and grade ten. Who are educated with Massachusetts Public Funding must participate in the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. This also includes our Remote Learning Academy students this year, and the state has recently provided training to principals and administration and teachers for remote students. Allowing students to opt out of M C A S would be in violation of the statute set forth in the Mass General Law. If a child is absent on a testing day, they would be rescheduled to take the session during the Department of Education's designated uh makeup window. If a student refuses to take a test when it is presented to them, the building principal or designated test coordinator would then notify students' parents of that refusal. Specifically, as it relates to the high school, the class of twenty twenty-two, which is this year's current juniors. Will be given the the specific option to take M C A S in the fall or spring of next school year. Students may select one of those options in the links that were provided in Principal Colonnane's most recent newsletter. Additionally, any tenth grader this year that does not take the M C A S this spring. Will also have the opportunity to take it in the fall of the next school year as well. So I hope that that clears up um the M C A S piece for folks. There are some specifics there, but, you know, to be just. Clear, there is no opt in or opt out. It is required to take M C A S. And if a student is absent, they can't take it up in the, you know, in the the makeup window. Uh, and then parents would be notified if students did not, you know, are did refuse to take the test. And then those specifics for our high school students are offered so that they can complete the test as it is a graduation requirement.
Dr. McGuire, just speak just quickly about accountability this year with regards to M C A S.
Yeah, so you know, M C A S um ties into our accountability and more specifically, it ties into participation, the attendance, our attendance rates are tied into the accountability. So this is why, you know, when I'm cast, it's it's, you know, it's mandated and we do take attendance. So that impacts our accountability rating. This year, though, those those things have been waived, given the pandemic. Um, so we can be clear about that in terms of accountability. Um, you know, in meeting with principals, you know, we're, we are um certainly wanting students to come in and families to have students come in and make sure that they do take their M C A S test. It's a great formative assessment to give a sense on where kids are at. And it certainly will give us a variety of data as a school district, so we can know where there might be gaps. Um, so we can put our focus, particularly in the Teaching and Learning Department, um as well as for professional development for teachers in areas. as well as for professional development for teachers in areas that we we may see that need a little bit more of a more attention. So those kinds of formative assessments will be really informative for us moving forward.
So just to piggyback onto that thinking, you know, as we had discussions with our principals, we almost see that of any year, this is probably the year that MCAS is really important to teachers and to principals to help help folks sort through where some of the gaps in learning are. And with it not, you know, in in terms of the accountability component being a big player in our accountability this year, even more reason, like this, this, it's almost like, as we said this morning, when we're talking again, it's almost like there's no reason not to do this this year. So we we just wanted to put that out there. We'll ask for questions when we kind of get to the end of everything. So I'm going to go to the town of Bolton, the next item right now, passing the school budget. So we want to thank Bolton, yes, thank you so much for passing the budget, one down and two to go. So we thank, we thank everyone in Bolton for passing our budget and passing our capital items that were requested. So very grateful for their continued support and partnership in our schools. I'm I'm also going to take a minute now, and and I know Dr. McGuire is also going to make a couple of comments too with regards to school community recognition. Yes, there is a plot twist this this year, Elaine, you're absolutely right. This should have been your last meeting, but we are so grateful that you're coming back for one more and just to help get us, get us through to that that next, that next phase. So thank you for that. With that said, though, I, you know, as we spoke about it, you know, in our offices, we just thought it was important that we say thank you to both of you at this point in time together, because I think that you've been such a dynamic team, such a dynamic leadership team for our district, and and we see you both intertwined, and we are so grateful. So I just, I'm going to read a little bit, and then I'm just going to say a couple of words, and I know Dr. McGuire is. So we just want to extend a note of deep gratitude to Kathy Codian and Elaine Sanfilippo for their time, commitment, and dedication to NRSD. They have both been actively involved in general committee work, subcommittee efforts, and school committee leadership. They wrap up their membership terms with the district, with the district at this point in time, and we want to extend our thanks to both for their leadership, particularly through incredibly challenging times. And I don't think anybody can really understand what it's like to lead during challenging times unless you are in that leadership position, because it it defies all words, it defies all description. You know, when you've got the media at the door, or you've got an idea at two o'clock in the morning, and you're texting the superintendent saying, hey, I got an idea right now, let's talk about this. You know, you really have to live and breathe to to understand it. You've remained stalwart district supporters during difficult times, consistently exhibiting from my land's courage and dignity to lead. And and I think you've just remained incredibly undaunted during incredibly daunting times. And you you never lost that level of positivity, that level of motivation and desire to do what's right for the district and what's right for the children. And you've never had those personal agendas, you've always had the agenda of doing right by the children of NRSD, and I think that that has served, served the district, served our children incredibly well. And and we thank you both, is you both move on into other areas, and and I know that your your imprint here and your legacy of the district is enormous. I know that you will both go on to do the same kind of thing, because you both have so much energy and so much drive. I'm anxious to see where the next journey takes you for both of you. We are so grateful for your leadership, for your friendship, for your companionship, and and for being incredible team members during times when the teams could have fallen apart, and they didn't. And I'm, I'm just so incredibly grateful for that. We we did send flowers, I I think, to to both of you today, you should have received a lovely bouquet of flowers from the school district today. And we also have bowls that I hope you can see them, they are gorgeous, and and you will each get one. This, this happens to be Kathy's, and so I don't know if you can see the engraving on there for Kathy Codian and No Show Regional School Committee. And around on the other side, it basically says, you've made a difference. And I just think that that says it all. You have both made a difference. And in the lives of our children, in the lives of our staff, our administrators, and our district at large. And I am so grateful to you both, and I thank you so much for everything that you've brought to the district. So with that, Dr. McGuire, I'll I'll turn it over to you for a couple of remaining thoughts.
What is left to say?
I'm sorry.
I'm teasing. No, to you both, thank you so much. You know, I so appreciate how grounded both of you are and how smart both of you are, particularly when it comes to students and children. You know, I often sometimes look through my my dad lens oftentimes, and I know that Elaine, you you often look through your your parent lens because you've got some kiddos at home, and Kathy, you've been surrounded by kiddos your entire life. So I see that come out in both of you all the time when you put, you know, the interest of students, you know, at the top priority of 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 this school district. Elaine, too, your work with the Diversity Equity Committee moving forward is just already been so incredibly helpful in blending the work we're trying to do in teaching and learning. So I'm so thrilled that 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 work is gonna, is gonna continue. And Kathy, the same thing, all of the, you know, the connections you have with all of the work that you've done in this district and other districts, and the connections that you have with so many people are just so fruitful for the district. So I thank you both tremendously. It's been so wonderful working with you both and relatively easy, too. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And just a final thought for me, when I think Elaine to both you and Kathy, key words that come to mind are strength, courage, integrity, dignity. I think you just showed that time and time again, and you never ever lost that. So thank you, thank you for all of those things. So that would be it for our superintendent's report.
Thank you.
So new business, Mrs. Codian.
Okay, but did anybody, thank you, because that, I I mean, I I'm speechless. I I really appreciate the the kind words and the thoughtfulness and I I have just a few things to say, but I want to say it till the end, but I I'm just so appreciative of of your thoughts and 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 thank you so much. I I'll talk at the end briefly, because we're going to. Okay, so any questions for Brooke or Todd about the superintendent's report? Joseph?
Chairman, I I've got a very quick question. And I I read with some interest Commissioner Riley's statements in regard or response in regards to some of the school districts that were inquiring about MCAS opt-outs. And I I fully understand that he has the ability to suggest or dictate that because of the statutory framework under the reform act, that districts can be compelled to administer the MCAS testing. But what I thought was interesting was he, he said that we are mandated by both state and federal legislation. And I was wondering if either the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, could just enlighten me as to what federal legislation we are compelled to follow in regards to the administration of MCAS? Because I always had in my mind that MCAS was a very unique thing to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I was just wondering whether the federal tie-in is there.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll start, and then if Dr. McGuire, if I've missed something, you can fill it in. There is, there is a direct tie-in, actually. MCAS is unique to Massachusetts, but other states have similar types of of state administered, similar to MCAS, just go by a different name, that's all. And in large part, it's because it's tied to federal, and this is also all tied to money, how the money flows from the feds to the state, there's a tie-in there as well that's also linked to it. And I don't know if you, you probably might not, it may have kind of got under your radar last year, but you'll recall that one of the reasons we didn't know until so late in the year about any changes to MCAS last year was because the commissioner had to apply for a special waiver for us to make those changes to MCAS and be granted that from the feds. And I think that the feds made it abundantly clear this year to all of the chiefs, and the chief are the names that they give to all commissioners, because not every state calls their, I mean, Massachusetts calls it a commissioner, but every state has a little bit different name. So they call them the chiefs, the state chiefs. And so all the state chiefs, in essence, were were basically told that there weren't going to be any waivers this year for those, those administered, if you want to call them universal testing or whatever it is for the statewide. So, Dr. McGuire, would that be?
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's under ESSA, E S S A, so it's the Every Student Succeeds Act is the federal, the federal law that requires states to test all students annually in grades three through eight and one grade at the high school level. Now, those tests can can be very different, varying in state to state. You know, Massachusetts has, I would say, some of the the highest state, state, highest stakes testing, excuse me. And you can look at other states as well, but that that is the federal law that, if you're asking, that's the law that is required, that is the federal requirement.
Previously, no child left behind.
Right.
Chairman.
Any other questions for Brooke or Todd? Leah?
So just to be super clear, there is no opting out of the MCAS testing for all of our community members to hear that, that is the position.
There's no, there's no such thing as an opt-out, there's no form, there's no anything, you know, to to opt out of MCAS. It does not, there's just, just like an opt-in does not exist, an opt-out does not exist. The test will be administered to all students in those grades.
I just think it's unfortunate that there are some institutions in the state who are putting that option forward as legitimate, but we are putting forth an alternative viewpoint tonight that there is no opting out.
I think that what what you're seeing from some of those institutions has been longstanding, to be honest with you. It's not this first year that we are, that we have seen this. So I want to be really clear, and certainly for as long as I've served as a superintendent, that those institutions have put forth that thinking. So I think this year is just, it's just coming out in a different way, you know, so different iteration, if you will.
Amy?
Yeah, I I was wondering if you had a sense of whether the test itself has any changes just because of the year that we've all had? Is it, is it different in any way than in prior years, or is it, you know, will it be just as it would have been a year or two ago? You know, I think that there's, you know, as a parent, you just wonder like whether you're how your kid's going to fare on the test this year, considering that there have been so many changes to the schedule, to the routines, and all of that, and the curriculum, too.
So I think, Dr. McGuire, I'll start this, and then if I've missed something, you can fill it, fill in.
Yep.
I I think that's actually one of the reasons why we particularly support that happening, because that that test really isn't, for us, it's more important to see what our students know and don't know. And exactly as Dr. McGuire said earlier, that will help to guide the teaching and learning unit. It will help them to see where they need to put their energies, where they like. And I'll speak from from my years of working at the state and watching how those MCAS, those tests are created, it's a phenomenal process that you just can't even imagine the amount of work that goes into into preparing those tests and creating them, and 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 the amount of just attention to detail is phenomenal. And they are all like categorized appropriately, they're, they all send us different messages. And that's not to, like, something to be fearful of, that's something that we need to see, we we need to know where are some of those, because we'll, we'll see if if students do, you know, maybe they don't fare well, and I don't know, pick a question, like two, four, and six. That might lead us to say that we need to put energies over with this particular concept more than any others, because we'll know it'll categorize in the report to the school district, this is an area that's a gaping hole, you need to start to focus on it right now. So like I say, right now, this year cannot be a year that we look and say, how will my child do? Because it really doesn't matter in terms of score. What's more critical for us right now is that we need these types of universal screenings, just like we do with the elementary for, you know, the the BASS or the Fondson Canal or whatever, whatever types of testing that we're putting out there, we need that so that we can see what our kids have missed, because we need to focus on that and bring that together so that they can feel successful as they move forward. So I think of any year, this is a critical year, so just be the opposite thinking to some institutions that are saying, this shouldn't be the year, we would look and say, this actually should be the year, so that it gives our teachers a good, solid sense of direction of where to put their energies next year. Dr. McGuire, thoughts?
Yeah, so, you know, specifically, keep in mind that, you know, modifications, you know, were made originally that they recommended the change to the graduation requirement for the class of 22 in modifying the competency determination for English and math, so that those students would have modifications on that in recognition of the missed testing opportunities when when schools were closed last spring. Additionally, they did announce a series of modifications to this year's MCAS program for our third to eighth graders. You, and you'll note that they did postpone those exams till later, and they've also recommended and shortened the exams. So those are the, those are the reported and recorded changes and modifications to the test. Not a strong level of specificity, but they have been shortened, and obviously the tests were delayed. And then you'll note it in the superintendent's report, when I mentioned for the class of 2022, they have two opportunities to take it next year, and those 10th graders who don't take it this year will have an opportunity to take it in the fall.
Amy, I was taking your question more for content, and so that's why I responded the way that I did.
Yeah, absolutely, Brooke, too, but they they didn't come out with specific content other than they've shortened the tests.
Exactly. So that, and that's, that's the takeaway on this.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks.
One who is perhaps the most at risk here, because this test is not just a formative assessment, it's actually pretty summative on them. And it's a graduation requirement, and more than that, it provides scholarship opportunities. So for the sophomores who were out of school so much last year, and then, you know, we're in the full remote, but then hybrid, et cetera, what are we doing? Can those kids postpone until junior year to take it? Have we been prepping them to take this test that is already kind of a different test over the last couple of years? And they're, they're not probably yet good at taking this test yet. Or are we just like, can they take it a second time if they don't do well the first time?
So for for 10th graders, they are allowing them to take it next year, it will, that that retake will, right now, will be in the fall. Whether or not they offer another opportunity, we don't know that yet. That's the latest guidance that we do have. I think you raise a good point in terms of, you know, who, what, what grade level, you know, might be at the biggest disadvantage, but they are aware to of those, that 10th grade class, giving them the opportunity to take it, postpone to take it in the in the fall for just that reason, competency determination, as well as scholarship opportunity. And that was specifically cited in the guidance they gave last week.
Amy?
Can I just clarify, is it, do they get a choice of taking it either in the spring or in the fall, the 10th graders? Or can they take it, if they take it in the spring, can they retake it in the fall?
It is the class of 2022, that that's this year's juniors have the, have two options next year. Principal Colonnane put links to those two options in his newsletter. This year's sophomores have the option to take it in the fall.
Yeah, but my question is, if they take it in the spring, can they retake it in the fall, the sophomores?
I don't have that information. If they take it in the, if they take it in the, if they take it this year as a sophomore and they pass, there's no need for them to retake it again. The only reason why somebody retakes an MCAS test is they're not, you know, not passing or meeting the the graduation competency.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Sharon?
I'm wondering, do you know if there will be some type of an educational statement coming from the state? Or would you put something together at the district level that would kind of give some of this information in a very concrete way to parents so that they understand kind of the expectations a little bit better and understand the value of what, the value that you see in the test? Because I, I think a lot of parents are very invested in those scores and in, in doing well. And it could be upsetting if their child's does not get the score that they, you know, that's equivalent to what they had done before, or that they feel like, you know, their child hasn't gotten the score because they have lost something. And I'm just wondering if it might be helpful to have some education just in general, so that people can really understand what those scores mean and, and how they will be useful, even if they're not the same, you know, level of scores or the, you know, I don't, I'm not actually sure how to express this, but even if the scores aren't as high, maybe as they were hoping they would be, if that question makes sense.
We'll, we'll definitely go back and have some follow-up discussion with the principals on that, Sharon. I, you know, I think we actually, we already started some preliminary discussion on that this, this morning at a follow-up meeting that we had this morning. And this morning, by the way, was our first discussion around MCAS. We've got to point that out. So I don't want people to think that it was, because it definitely was not. But it was just a bit of a follow-up this morning as we were tying some loose ends together. So duly noted, Sharon. Thank you very much. We'll go back and have some follow-up conversation.
Rich, do you have a question?
Yeah, is there a chance that the administration could share the high school newsletter? I don't have kids at the high school, so I don't even really understand a lot about some of the stuff that's going on there.
We'll, we'll definitely follow up tomorrow, Rich. If, maybe Alida, if you can just make, uh, take a note of that, and we'll make sure that that's done.
Thanks. Maybe that could just be like a regular thing if sharing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions for Brooke or Todd relative to the superintendent's report? Okay, next item on the agenda is the new business pool testing survey results. So I will turn it over to Brooke.
Sure. So what we're doing tonight is just putting out the information that we collected with regards to the survey that was generated a while, a while back. And Dr. McGuire actually is going to go through, he pulled the slide deck together. We've had follow-up discussion, obviously, with our nurse leader and our nurses and our district physician as well. So we'll kind of follow that all through here as we, as we talk through. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Dr. McGuire. You'll probably want to share the screen, either Alida or Todd. And let's start to go through this.
Alida, do you want me to share?
No, I got it.
Thanks. And just to follow up, Rich, with your question, the newsletter for the high school is always on the front page of the high school website, and it is located there now. So all of that information tied to MCAS and those links for the juniors is, is uploaded and right on the front page of the high school website.
Thanks. Thanks a lot to me now. It'd just be good to have pushed at me because I don't know what I don't know. And so I wouldn't even know to look for it.
Okay.
Thank you, Alida.
So we're going to specifically talk about the pool testing. So the school district really put together at the beginning of the second week of April, put together a very basic survey to get some general feedback from the community as it related to pool testing. But the survey gave a lot of more, you know, information about pool testing than actually in terms of feedback. We just really wanted to gauge interest as it's another way to test students as well as faculty with, in relation to COVID-19. So, so it was actually earlier this month, would be actually earlier in April, we surveyed the faculty and families to gauge that interest associated with the state's pool testing efforts associated with the pandemic. And so we also wanted to inform them and what, on what pool testing is. And so it does involve a mixing of several test samples taken together from multiple students in a batch or a pool. And the pooled sample is then tested offsite to detect for any of the COVID-19 virus. And so to administer that kind of testing, students get consent, families give their consent for student testing, to step outside of the classroom, meet with building nurses, obviously with social distancing and masking mitigation strategies in place. Our nurse leader, Lisa Gilbicki, explained that a small applicator would be swabbed in each nostril of the student, or staff members choosing to it, and then placed in that test tube. Next slide. The test is performed at least once per week with an anterior nasal swab, very similar to a Q-tip, on students and staff members. And results from the pool are delivered within approximately one, one to two days to the school district officials. In this case, it would be Lisa Gilbicki, our nurse leader. If a pool test comes back negative, then all the individuals within that pool are presumed to be negative and may continue to remain in school. If a pool test comes back positive, then all individuals within that pool will be tested at school with the Abbott Binax Now Rapid Test, which is the one we have been using this year already, and remain in school until the results are confirmed with a PCR test. And so we simply asked two questions, basically, when we put this out to our communities and our faculty, just to identify whether you're a parent of a student in the district, a faculty member or also, or, or other. So out of the entire district as well as faculty, we got seven hundred and ninety-eight responses to this. We kept the survey open for just over ten days. Interest among seven hundred and ninety-eight total respondents, sixty-five point five percent of them said yes, they would be interested, and thirty-four point five percent said they would not be interested. And so just drawing conclusions, and again, this is just data, but that would, that equates to about five hundred and twenty-two respondents indicated an interest in participating. And then about two hundred and seventy-six respondents indicated no interest in participating, based on those responses that we did get. Just to point out, this is a much lower than traditional participation in a district survey. When we send out a district survey, usually within our district, our faculty and family surveys usually lean anywhere from thirteen hundred to twenty-seven hundred responses. And some examples of that from this year, when we did our fall school return survey, we had twenty-seven hundred responses. Our early release day survey that we put out earlier in the year, gauging interest on early release days, was approximately fifteen hundred responses. So we just wanted to give the data in the interest from those who responded to our survey. Whether or not there was even an interest in participating in the pool testing that I know Lisa Gilbicki has also presented on here in the past as well. So I don't know if there's any questions around the data, but we just wanted to present the actual data to you folks to give you a sense of the kind of interest that, you know, was generated or, or not.
So I, I just want to point out that one of the concerns that we have was just the the lower percentage of participation. And, you know, when you take a look at the sheer number that are expressing interest, that doesn't, you know, our, our concern, when we talk to other districts that have tried this, in fact, I, I sat with a whole group of superintendents that have pool testing and in, in a meeting. And they said if they had to do it all over again, they absolutely would not have done it. And it just, what they found is parents started, but then it just kind of tapered off. And then it left the school districts in a position to try to set up campaigns to get more people involved. And it just became, it just, it just became a bigger, a, a, a bigger issue than, than the actual pool testing itself. And there, what they were saying is something that I think we've said before, too, is if we don't have strong numbers, the data is only valuable for the number of people that are participating, right? It's, so it, it doesn't, I think that people thought that, you know, well, everybody in the classroom is going to be tested and this is, and, and we clearly see that that isn't the case. And, and we've had email responses from parents that said that they have no interest in doing this. So, so as, exactly as Todd said, our, our only goal tonight was to put out the survey results from the survey that, that we've received. So that's kind of where it stands right at this point in time. So, you know, we've, we've spoken with our district physician and the nurse leader, who feel that this is just not strong enough showing for us to put pool testing in for the, the value, the type of value that we, we would want to get. And especially as we just go into the tail end of the school year, as now, just now, all of our kids are getting back in. We are still using the Binax Now. We are still doing the contact tracing. We're still doing everything that we've done all the way along. So that hasn't changed. The only thing that continues to change is as the guidelines change, we change with them. So instead of the six foot, for example, we've gone to the three foot and all that other kind of stuff, you know, and, and, and those are changing rapidly, almost on a daily basis. And our nurse and nurse, nurse leader and our nurses are changing with them. So at this point in time, I, I think that we have chosen to say that we don't feel that we would like to move ahead with the pool testing right now, based on the results.
Questions for Brooke? Mary?
I would, I would just like to say that, that I agree. And what's so interesting about this is that participation in the survey is, you know, no doubt correlated and indicative of participation in the pool testing. So you have a survey and you're looking at the participation in the survey, and it's about participation in pool testing. So I mean, there's a lot of, of strength there to say, and just what Brooke is talking about, to have to try to sell this. If our families really wanted this, they would have, we would have seen more response, it seems to me, in terms of the, the survey. But I just think it's interesting. We're looking at the participation in the survey, but it has to do with how many would participate. And it's not even a hundred percent of the five hundred and what, whatever it was, the seven hundred and ninety-eight responses. So it seems to me to be the right decision. And I, I thank you for doing it and giving us the data.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, Brooke, I'm wondering if you could share with us some of maybe the logistical drawbacks of, of engaging with the pool testing? In other words, is there a, is there a financial component to it? Is there just an added workload component to it?
Well, there's definitely a huge added workload component to it, definitely. You know, and, and I think that, again, when you're talking to, to other superintendents who are doing both the state and those who've chosen not to do the state, but to do private, because we looked at all of that. We, when we went after this, we weren't looking simply at the state offered, pool testing, we looked at state offered and others, because other districts are not doing the state, they're doing others. So we wanted to take a look at everything and try to find the best approach forward. And, you know, I think that others, for example, are finding that it, it's hard now for them to even get the test done. And so you've got nurses chasing students, students as such, for example. So the workload isn't just in the obvious. It kind of goes beyond that. And so, and, and those are some of the things that the, the other superintendents in our area were, you know, were sharing. I think Harvard right now, from what we can tell, is probably the only district where this is just running. I, I, there's not a lot of complaints out of Harvard right now. So I think that, I don't know whether it's just their sheer numbers. I'm, I'm not sure what it is. But I think Harvard seems to be the only one that is not, not feeling as the other districts are. But otherwise, that's the general consensus. In terms of costs, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised that the, the state has extended this, because I think that the, extended it in terms of time to do it for free, where the state is paying for it. Because I think that they had far less participation in it, in this particular statewide program, than they had hoped for or anticipated. And so, and I think there's all kinds of reasons for that. I don't think it's just one singular, or, you know, just even a couple. I think there are multiple reasons why parents are not wanting to take part in this. So I think that had we gone down the, the state route, I don't, that there are some costs incurred, but I think we'd already figured a way around that through COVID funding to help offset that. So I don't think, Todd, would it be fair, I don't think that we ever looked at money as the issue when we first started down this road at all. So I think we were just looking to see what would be the best for Nishoba. That's, that was the approach that we took.
Yep. And getting, you know, getting a sense from those other school districts in terms of the value, or whether they were, they were really seeing, you know, that, that it was making any sort of a, a major change for them in their districts. Also combined with the, the workload on our nurses as, as well. So I think that that, you know, that feedback from other districts, when you and I meet with them weekly, was really important. And that, which is why we wanted to survey not only the communities, but as well as our faculty. And we got such a, you know, a diminished response from that. You know, and again, it's just data, but I think it sent, you know, it certainly sent a message. So I would agree with you.
Mary was very articulate in how she.
I agree. Thanks, Mary.
And I think too, to your point, I'm glad that you brought that up, because that was something else of the, that other superintendent said is that, that it wasn't finding a large number of cases. And so the amount of workload for what the value was that you got, you know, they just felt that, that it wasn't a payoff at all. But we didn't, we never took that approach, because we always had an open heart and an open mind when we were going after this point, frankly.
Yep.
Questions for Brooke or Todd? Leah?
So are, are we not doing it?
No, not going to do it. We, we've, we've gone every which way you can imagine on this, because we, for quite a while there, we thought we were going to. And we, we got all of our ducks aligned so that we could. We applied for all the paperwork. We did, like, we've, we did everything that we needed to do as a district. But we realized quickly that, we knew within that night, what, because normally when we send out an interview, generally within two to three hours, we have probably, Todd, would you say, two-third of the respondents, or maybe even three-quarters of respondents that we normally get? And we had this thing open for ten days. And it, the response just wasn't there, you know? So, so at this point in time, we're saying this is not worth it.
Other questions? Amy?
I, the only thing I think we need to acknowledge is that the survey data does show that the respondents who, the people who did answer, show that there was a majority in favor of the pool testing. Even if we didn't get a huge response rate, that is kind of what I see when I look at the data. And that's nothing that has been brought up in your.
Well, actually, no, it was. Todd brought that up right at the very beginning. Our concern is that the actual raw data, when you take a look at the numbers of people, a couple of things, Amy. First of all, the number of, of parents that we, we blast our, you know, our information out to is several thousands. So that's why, you know, we easily get back, you know, anywhere from, like, on the low end, maybe fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred responses. On the high end, though, twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred, three thousand, that's what we get. We got nowhere near that. And, and so we said this right at the beginning, that that was our concern. And that's exactly what Mary just articulated again, as to one of the reasons why it doesn't make sense to go forward, is because it doesn't matter that the sixty-five percent was there. You need to look at that contextually with a larger, broader audience of the number of students and parents in our district. And so if you take a look at that contextually, it doesn't make sense.
Other questions for Brooke? Steve?
Not a question, but a comment. I mean, from a, from a statistical standpoint, what Mary said, I mean, yes, it was a majority of people who responded, but the majority of people, but the total number of people who responded yes or no was a small, was a minority of the people that we normally get to, who respond to a survey. And therefore, whether it's sixty-five percent or not, it's, the numbers look like it's like less than five hundred people or responded positively to this. And you can almost say that the people who didn't respond were really responding negatively. who didn't respond were really responding negatively by not responding at all. So I think that, uh, that the decision not to go forward with this is certainly, certainly well-based.
Leah?
Just really quickly, I have to say that that's not the way data analysis can happen though. What we don't know is what all of those other people think. We don't know. We cannot assume we do know what they think. Now, it's possible that Steve's point is, is correct, but it's also possible that it's not. So I just want to put that out there. We don't know what those other people want, but from what you're showing, um, now the data is not disaggregated by faculty, like the response rate. I don't know if it's faculty all saying no and parents who were surveyed all saying yes, because that's not pulled apart, but um, you know, a sixty-five percent positivity rate shows that, you know, a third of our people who participated are not interested. So, and, and at this point in time, I mean, it's, it's May. So, I mean, could we even get it up and running? Is it worth it? That's all at play for the money, right? Or is it totally free?
No, there'll, there will still be costs that, that are going to be attributed to the school district. It's not totally free. A, a huge part of it is free, but it's not one hundred percent free.
Other questions? Sharon?
It's not a question, um, so much as a comment, but, um, so the other piece of this, which maybe you spoke to, I don't exactly recall, but is that if you, if you have such a small number of people that are participating, so even if all five hundred and twenty-two, is that the number of the people that responded? Yes, they wanted to do it actually followed through and participated in it. That is a very small percentage of the total number of children and faculty in the district. And if you have such a small number of people participating in the testing, it, it, how valid is your testing? Because it's such a small number of people that are participating, you are really not getting a good sense of what the situation is in the whole. Um, and so I would think that that is a very compelling reason to not do it because you, you wouldn't get good data from it even if you went ahead with that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Brooke? Okay. Thank you for the information. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the school committee manual. Mary, do you want to tee this up or how do you want to work this since we're on the PSC?
Oh, whoops. So, um, the PSC, PSC has been working on this and as we all know, the school committee manual, um, it's a, it's a public document, but specifically the school committee manual is a document for us to guide um, and also to, uh, to capture the wisdom, um, of, of the experience of, of school committee members as well as policies that we would need to know about. So we have, we have worked on this and haven't, um, heard, um, except today, you know, from one person. And I, I, I'm sure he, he will share, um, and appreciate, appreciate that. And, um, but I, I think Kathy, if you want to, to go through, well, the other, the other point is that following our, um, personnel subcommittee meetings, uh, I sent a memo with, um, the parts of the, uh, school committee manual that had, that contain the suggested changes. And I was, we were hoping that you would read the whole manual and read those in the context of the whole manual. But if not, and these are tough times, everybody's very busy, that you would at least read the, um, revisions. And so I think one of the ways to do this would be just to, um, to open up and, and find out, if that's okay with you Kathy, that we find out if there is anything to discuss. Or do you want to go through them one by one?
Well, I think that we opened it up. I know that Joseph wanted to speak to, um, um, a point that he raised earlier today. So I would suggest that Joseph, uh, go first and then, um, we can open it up to see what thoughts are of the rest of the committee.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, and thank you, Dr. McCarthy as well. I did go through the manual and I was most appreciative of the highlighting of the revisions. Uh, it made it very simple and easy to see what changes are being proposed. And as far as the changes are concerned, uh, I would suggest that everything on there looks good, except for one thing, which was that one matter that I did address with both you and, uh, your fellow committee member this afternoon. And I apologize, it's a little untimely to be bringing that notice to you at this point, but I felt that would be, give you at least some notice that, that there was one issue that I did take with the, uh, proposed, uh, changes. And it's a kind of a minor one, but it's, it's, I think it's an important one. It, it's in this, the, the notation at the sec, the bottom of the section regarding, uh, the public hearing on the budget. And I think that, um, what the, uh, notation is stating is appropriate in regards to public hearings that the district holds in regard to its budget or to school choice. And in other words, in those matters where the district is the presenter or the petitioner. Uh, I think that what the notation is stating about that, this is not a time for discussion or colloquies or questions is appropriate. However, if you look at the bigger picture and if you look at our policy uh, in regards to public hearings, the policy is very clear. It states that, you know, in addition to the statutory requirements, the, the committee is empowered at its discretion to hold public hearings on any matter it de- deems advisable. So by way of example, we can go back to say July of last year where we had the mascot issue and it was suggested by some of the members of this committee that perhaps we have a public hearing on that issue. The committee chose not to do that, which is the committee's, is, is the prior, the prerogative. However, had we had that opportunity to have a public hearing on say, an issue just like that, I would suggest that the presenters or the petitioners may very well be those outside of our district. And if you've watched or you've been an observer of how select board meetings and city council operate, they do a lot more public hearings than school committees do. And it is often part of the process that committee members, ca- city councillors, select board members and the public at large are, are permitted and encouraged to make inquiry of the presenter or the petitioner. So relative to those limited areas of public hearings that we, we do hold, like the budget and the school choice where we are the presenter, I think it's appropriate that, you know, we leave it up to the public to come in, give their input and then we discuss on our own at a different time or after the public hearing is closed. But if in those rare instances, and I think our policy does, it state, does address it, where we decide to have an issue, or we decide to put a matter on for public hearing where we have an outside party present or petition, it is wholly appropriate for members of the committee to be able to make inquiry of the presenter. Otherwise, we would have no basis on which to make our decision. So I, I would, I, I'm going to leave it at that. I will come back to this at the, at the end of this. I, I was going to move, but I won't do it at this point. The other people may have things to say. But I was going to move to just to strike that notation at this point and leave it on, but I'll, I'll wait on my motion at this point, Madam Chairman.
That's fine. And, and I think that you raise a, a good point. Um, and again, we haven't done a lot of, um, the public hearings that we have held have been for things that we work on, the budget. But I think that you're going to find, we're going to find moving forward that there may be more public hearings when you get into the real, uh, nitty gritty of the high school building project. And so you don't want to, um, um, to, to limit that. You want, you don't want to constrain it. Um, perhaps the easiest thing to do when the time is appropriate is, is just a note, um, to, is to delete that and let the rest of the section stand at ease, but we can come back to that if that's okay with you.
That's not with me. I just want to give everybody an opportunity to speak on it. So maybe those feel different than I do.
Okay.
Well, very, well, I'd just like to respond and, um, and, and say, um, Jill, that I, I do understand what you're talking about. Uh, I think that some of the, the motivation here um, was in, in saying that that was not the time for school committee was to, and not that anyone on this school, school committee would ever do this, but there could be someone in the world of school committees who might someday be here, who would do grandstanding. In other words, have the superintendent there, have the business manager there and, um, and, you know, grill or ask questions. Um, and so what, what I thought was it some, a language change rather than eliminate it and, and say something like this. School committees should conduct their own questions during regular school committee meetings prior to and following from a public hearing, that they should. Because Joe, you brought up a really good point. There could be something, um, because in the world, in, in the universe, there could be something that, uh, administration or superintendent would bring up that we had never heard before. And rather than to sit on our hands and not say anything, um, it would be terrible to constrict a school committee not to be able to ask a question. But we do have, especially in regard to the budget, we have other opportunities and lots of opportunities um, to have, you know, input into it and to know what that's going to be before the public hearing. So the public hearing is to hear from our public, give them a chance. And then certainly we can discuss and follow up. So that's, I, I hear what you're talking about and I think that we don't want to put strictures on a school committee. Um, but if we said that school committee should conduct their own questions during regular school committee meetings prior to and following from a public hearing, I, I think we've covered it then. So that's my thought on this. And I thank you for bringing it up.
Leah?
So I agree with Joe. I think that this language actually does need to be taken out because it's not in line with mass general law. So after our last budget hearing where we weren't allowed to speak, I was actually really surprised because the mass general law does not say that. So we are supposed to be able to talk at the public hearings. That's what the public hearings are for. It's for us to have public, not deliberation, but dialogue with our constituents. And when we were asked a question by a Lancaster resident, and I think member of their FinCom, um, that was budget related, we were not able to respond to him. So if we can't talk there, when, when can we talk with these people? And so that's what I think the budget hearing is designed to do and what all public hearings are designed to do is to allow the public bodies to maintain open meeting law and converse in public. So I would be, um, very much in favor of taking out that note.
Thank you. Um, other questions or comments about, um, the issue on public hearings or anything else in the, the handbook? Amy?
Yes, thank you. Um, I had some additional comments. Um, I do agree with what Joe has brought up, but it had occurred to me, so I thank him for, for bringing that issue for attention. Um, I was wondering if there's a reason why um, I'm on the wrong. Have the document pulled up on page twenty-one. Talking about subcommittees, advisories and liaisons. And I don't think that I saw the communications subcommittee or the Dear J listed there. I didn't know if that was an unintentional omission or there, they should be included in the list.
Hang on. I'm trying to go there. All right. So nineteen audit. Um, it was not an intentional, um, oversight. We can certainly add those in.
Yeah. Okay. That was one question I had. Um, the other comment or question I have is on page twenty-five. Uh, we were talking about public participation at school committee meetings. Um, whether that should, whether, whether we are, that we have too much, um, detail in this section since we have a policy that outlines, that outlines our, the rules for public participation at school committee meetings. Um, I don't see that the policy is referenced and it seems cleaner to reference the policy and, and.
There is a policy reference, um, at the very end, school committee policy section B, what's, what's missing is, I, I don't know if it's BDH, the, the, uh, rest of the citation is missing. So there's some additional letters after that.
B E D H. I looked it up.
D H. Okay.
Okay.
So get that.
Okay. And then with the superintendent search section, I think it's great addition to the school committee manual because if we have to get into doing this again, then there'll be, you know, it, it should be easier for the, the next people to find all this. So thank you for incorporating that. Um, I was wondering if I was misreading something here. Do you have the timeline, a draft timeline and a revised timeline in here?
Um, I see that there are some links. If you go to the end, that's a link that you can go to to see it. And it's actually linked to, um, meeting materials. So not to include it in case it got, so it, it, there's a, a linked reference to that. That's with that on page, um, five of that appendix, um, in the dark blue, um, font. If you, uh, uh, click on that, you're going to go to the revised, um, timeline.
Okay. Uh, all right. Thank you. That, that clears out my questions.
Thank you, Amy. Other questions or comments? Mike?
Thank you. Um, on, um, on page twenty-seven of the manual under public participation at school committee meetings, item number two, it says, um, speakers, um, must, uh, present material related to an agenda item of that meeting. And I think that's been the traditional, um, criteria.
Hang on, Mike. Let me get there because I, I remember changing that. Let me just get to that page. Hang on. Where am I going? I'm still in appendices. Um.
It's page twenty-five of the, um.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Twenty-seven of the document.
Yep. No, I'm, I'm looking at it on my iPad. I'll be right there. Twenty-two, three, four, public. Yeah. On number two, it says speakers will be allowed three minutes to present material which must be related to an agenda item of that meeting. And then in blue text, it says, or a topic that is within the purview of the school committee, parent parentheses, policy, budget, superintendent. So that is in there.
Right. So I guess my, my, my comment is that the reason for me why the traditional criteria worked is because when, um, someone making a citizen comment, um, addresses something related to, uh, the agenda, um, then it gave members of the school committee at least an indirect way of responding, even they don't, even though they don't respond in the moment, they could, um, kind of respond indirectly through conversations once that agenda item came up. I think the problem with opening that up to anything within the purview of the school committee, budget or superintendent would mean that someone could come and develop a, um, uh, a public comment and it would just sort of sit there. There'd be no discussion of it. There'd be no commentary. There'd be no future, um, deliberation over it. Um, so, you know, I, I, I personally feel like if we can restrict it to just something on the agenda, at least that gives the presenter the dignity of having that content be brought up and open for discussion and to inform an opinion, um, that's associated with, with, um, the agenda for that evening. Opening it up to anything means that that comment can be made and it never gets discussed.
Um, well, this is consistent with revised, um, regulations regarding public comments. You may recall a couple of years ago that I referenced Spalding versus the initi- the native school committee.
Yep.
And that they were found in, in violation of O M L for restricting. And so this is actually from the revised statute. Now, that being said, if someone brings something up, if it is not on the current agenda, because this has not been the practice of the committee to take something that was brought up, um, at public comments, at a, a meeting that we were all attending, um, um, that, that did not come up for discussion. But this is, this is part of the new regulations, Mike. And, and if it did resonate with the committee, there's nothing to say that a suggestion could not be made to put it on a future agenda.
So we're putting it on there because it's now part of the, um,
Yes.
The, the statute.
State rates. Um, yeah. Mary?
And this is common practice. And this is common practice of school committees across the Commonwealth. And your point, Mike, about, so we'd be moving backwards in a way to what we had before, that people would come to meetings and have a comment about something and, and then find, they couldn't even say anything because it wasn't on the agenda. And so now at least we have that, that if someone has a comment to make on anything that might be in the purview of school committee, they can certainly make that comment within three minutes. What, what the chair is able to do oftentimes, and Kathy has shown us this, is that she has followed up with someone later. Certainly when we hear, you know, our eyes, our, our ears aren't closed because we say, oh, we can't hear anything except what's on the agenda. So we hear what people bring up and that informs us, informs the superintendent. And whenever possible, no, it's not going to be able to be addressed that same evening. However, it's, we're still in a better place than we had been before with the disgruntlement of, of citizens and parents who came to meetings and couldn't, and couldn't speak. I mean, I sat in the audience with some of these people prior to being on, on school committee and, and talked to them outside afterwards and the, and the frustration that they felt. They wanted to be heard. And, and so now they will be heard. And if what they say is completely inappropriate, we have ways to be able to sanction too. And that's not going to usually be the case. It's just going to be that it's not something that is on, on the agenda, but certainly something, if it's important to a citizen, that's that, that someone on the committee, the chairperson, it could be the superintendent, that, that we listen and, and we don't let things fall through the cracks.
Rich?
This is a tricky one and I'm interested to hear what other people say, but can we at least make any of the comments or allow the comments to be germane to what was said by school committee members pertaining to school committee business? So if, if some personal opinion was expressed in a different forum, that we don't allow that comment to be entered into the record. I don't know if that's possible, but some, I know some people on the committee.
For a later time relative to the, the practice, because I don't, as long as what somebody brings up is pertinent to either the agenda, budget policy or the superintendent, then, then they have some the opportunity to speak to it.
Well, I mean, I, I'll be, in particular, there was an item brought up by a, a, a constituent, I guess, that had nothing to do with the school committee. It was between the school and a town. And the comments were made in a totally different forum, not anything to do with the school. And, you know, some, I know some of the committee members think if they want to talk about the score of a Cubs game, that's appropriate. I just think if it's not relevant specifically to some comment that a member made, made in a, in a forum relative to the school committee, then, you know, it's not, shouldn't be germane to a meeting.
Anybody want to comment or respond? Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To my colleague from Stowe, I, I understand where he's coming from. I understand the motivation and I, I, my heart bleeds in that regard. And I don't mean that sincerely, Rich. I mean that sincerely. I understand where you're coming from on this. But you bring up an issue about the record and as a matter of practice and, and protocol in our district, we do not memorialize comments in the minutes of our meeting. I know that sometimes material is submitted. I don't believe they've made part of our, our minutes. If I'm not, if I'm mistaken, please correct me. I know some districts do include public comment as part of their minutes. For example, the city of Lawrence does include public comment as part of their minutes, but we don't do that as a matter of course. So I, I understand as a, it goes on the internet, it's there forever, but as a matter of practicality, it really isn't part of what we consider to be the, the legal transcript of our meetings.
Rich? And then Leah?
I was just going to quickly say that it's very difficult to limit what people say as long as it's within the purview of the school committee. That's what the Supreme Court of, well, not the Supreme Court, I guess the appellate court said in that needed case.
That's right.
Unfortunately.
Rich?
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, I'm still trying to feel out where the edges are this, of this are, you know, I believe in free speech and pretty unfettered free speech, but there's a lot of opportunity for people to say things wherever, including from Facebook to the newspaper. So I don't necessarily feel like letting divisive speech or something like that into our meeting is necessary, but I, I definitely care what everybody else is saying. So we can move on from my perspective.
Thank you. Other comments? Leah and Elaine, do you have your hand up? Okay, Leah?
So on, on page one, Kathy, now I lost it. It says at the bottom there, duties of a chairperson, and then it talks a little bit about the conduct of meetings and using Robert's rules.
Hang on, let me get there. Three, two. Yes, go ahead.
So in my quest to better understand my job here, I've been reading a lot and what I've discovered is that strict adherence to Robert's rules of order is actually not necessary by open meeting law from what I can divide, from what I could figure out. So I don't know if we, and we could perhaps leave it in the manual now and just discuss it next year. But I know that sometimes we all get really tied up by like amendments and all this sort of a thing. And I think that really it's about the chair using or maintaining decorum and that Robert's rules is one way to do that. And so I just want to throw that out there.
No, you know what? Let me go back and look because I know there's something in the bylaws and this doesn't, I, I think strict adherence is assumed, but our bylaws state it differently. So I'd like to be able to go back. The, the, the the bylaws speak to it in a more like whenever possible. I mean, it's more, it's, it doesn't come across as being strict. So I can go back and amend that to make sure it's stated this, that, and it doesn't appear to be strict adherence. Okay, thank you, Leah. On page one. It's rules. Other questions or comments? Mary?
I just want to say though, that in support of Robert's rules of order, not strict Robert's rules of order, but Robert's rules of order. If Robert's rules are not used, then another form of order that would be understood by everyone and formalized in some way could be substituted, but that's not the protocol that's used not only in, in Massachusetts, but, but across the, the country. And so it makes a lot of sense to use Robert rules of order, but the strict adherence part, what's most important is that people understand and there's consistency in terms of motions. And so there could be another, another format, but rather than designing something, you know, it's pretty easy to use Robert rules of order and, and get, get all of us acquainted with them and have some people who are expert on it, but not get too, too tied up in.
And I'll, I'll make sure that, that what is in the bylaw supplants what's in here. As, as E V. Anything else? Joe, do you want to address your issue in a more formal way?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Just a quick question. Is it the intent of the chair to call for a vote on the amendments as presented to the school committee manual this evening? Are we going to vote on the amendments?
Ideally, yes. If people feel they need more time, then it can be moved to another meeting.
That's why I was asking because I didn't know if anybody was interested in tabling this because it seemed like there were some, a lot of issues and questions regarding some of the, the changes. But if nobody's interested in tabling it, then I will simply move to strike the note on page eight regarding public hearings. And if I'm, to get a second on that, Madam Chairman, I'd like to just to speak very briefly on the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Okay, who seconded? Leah?
I did, Leah. All right.
All right. So we have a, a motion to strike the note on page eight regarding public hearings in the, in the school committee manual. So now I will give the floor to Mr. Gleason and then entertain other comments and questions before a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to speak very briefly to my colleague, Dr. McCarthy's comments and I, I, I understand and I, I concur with her in regards to how these, how these public hearings should be presented and how they should be controlled in regards to those matters which we ourselves are presenting. Again, the budget, school choice, those are district initiatives, those are district prerogatives. And my intent really is say, and by removing that language, it, it doesn't constrict the school committee members as to what can and can happen at public hearings. As a matter of fact, I think it freezes in that regard, but it doesn't preclude the chair from setting ground rules for public hearings. And it would certainly be the prerogative of the chair to say, look, we're going to have our hearing on the budget. I'm going to simply allow public comment on it because the district committee can then speak to this in our regular session. But if, again, if it's a presenter from outside the district, it's a lost opportunity for at least my, from my perspective, if I don't have an opportunity to at least make some inquiry of that presenter while they're at the public hearing. And as I said, this is sort of the manner in which public hearings are run in the Commonwealth. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this motion?
I just want to say that I'm, I'm fine with striking it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I am going to call the vote. Mike? Oh, oh, wait a minute, I gotta do the motion again. Oh, okay. So the motion is to strike the note on public hearings that is on page eight of the school committee manual, which reads, a public hearing allows the school committee to hear from members of the public on a particular topic. It is not an opportunity for the school committee to conduct their own questions and answer sessions relative to that topic. That discussion can occur during a regular school committee meeting. So that's what is being, the, the motion to strike is about that. Okay, so now, Mike Orish.
So a vote of yes means to strike.
Correct.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions or comments about the revisions to the school committee manual? Seeing none. Elaine, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I would move to accept the school committee manual as amended.
Second?
Second.
That's Amy. Any questions or comments? Mary?
I'd just like to thank Alita for all of her work. Every god to this, you know, which is a major undertaking. And so kudos to you, Alita and Kathy, for all the work that you've done on this too. But that, that's all I wanted to say, but I just, I'm so appreciative of, of her work and how timely it is at a time when she is super busy.
Yeah, thank you, Alita. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Mary made a comment. Are we ready to vote? So the motion is to accept the school committee manual as revised. So I will start off. I vote yes. Amy?
Yes, and thank you for all the work on it.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yeah.
Very good. So I will make the, the changes. I will send them to Alita, who will make all the texts the same color. It'll be posted on the website and it'll be available as our new members are joining the committee. So thank you, everyone, for your feedback on that. And the next thing on the agenda, if I can find it, is, okay, so the item is on interim superintendent and this is information only. And we sort of alluded to this a little bit at our executive session on April 16th. So at that executive session, we approved Superintendent Clancy's request to change her last day of employment in the district from July 23rd to June 30th. Superintendent Clancy has not used any of her vacation days for the 2021 school year and had many vacation days unused from the previous school year as well. And I'm just going to add in, this is true of, I think, just about all of our administrators in the district. Superintendent Clancy will take 22 of her vacation days during the month of June and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Todd McGuire will serve as acting superintendent for the month of June. Depending on the availability, and this will be based on what the, what their contract says, the new superintendent's contract in their own district. The school committee may consider hiring an interim from July 1st to the time at which the new superintendent can begin work here. Resources for identifying interims include M A S C and M A S S. In 2016, the chair of the P S C was the point person in this process and brought forward candidates to be interviewed by the school committee and the school committee is the body that will choose and it's an interim superintendent should the need arise. Interim superintendents are compensated on a per diem basis. Information from N A S S is that there are two ways to determine a per diem rate. The first one is to take the current superintendent's salary and divide it by the number of days in the superintendent's work year. Or take the average of a Massachusetts superintendent's salary, the average of which is $179,460 and determine a per diem based on that. The school committee has set the salary range for the superintendent at $180,000 to $210,000 and the superintendent's work year is 260 days. So the range of the per diem, given that range and the superintendent's work year would be $692 to $807. No action needs to be taken tonight on this. This is for your information and the search timeline has finalists being presented to you on May 19th. So perhaps you can better assess the need for an interim at that point. Just wanted to have this information out there. Mary and I, as members of the P S C, had a brief conversation about this. And so as the, the chair of the P S C, Mary would work with M A S and M A S S to identify perhaps people who would be interested in doing an interim superintendentship if we need it. Any questions? Leah?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. McGuire for picking up the torch and acting as interim superintendent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. We are ready to move on to, I think that item D, the recertification will be on the 19th. Are we prepared for that tonight?
That's, that's absolutely correct that we are going to do those votes because we have a verbal, but we're looking for the concrete number from the Department of Local Services. So Pat, I hope I said that correctly. So and, and we expect that for the next meeting. We expect that number to be, and so you would take your votes at that point in time.
Okay. And so Brooke, unfinished business is the FY22 budget update?
Yep. So, thank you. So I think that we've got a, a a bit of, just one slide, I think that we're going to put up in half a minute here. Alita, just give me half a minute if you can kind of prep it, but, but I just want to tee it up first. So initially, you'll recall. So initially, you'll recall that, you know, we've said all along, uh, you know, we're unsure where we're going to land. We did, we put our best foot forward at the end of January with the numbers that we have, but we all know, and you've seen this play out, that all kinds of other numbers come in well after that end of January workshop, that that take us one way or the other. This year particularly was even more so because, and again, I know that you've heard these terms before, but you've heard about the CARES money, the S R one, the S R two, and now the S R three coming down the pipeline. And we weren't initially sure where that S R three would land, um, and and whether we would be able to take advantage of it or not. Um, we got some affirmation, uh, verbal affirmation this morning about our S R three number. And so in talking to D E S E, Pat had some communication with them this morning, so we felt particularly comfortable in bringing forward tonight and saying, okay, here's where we've landed. We did go back and for those of you who have been on school committee for a number of years, and I know, Steve, you're going to say, yes, you've done this almost every year. We pulled the vehicles out of the budget, the vehicles that we so badly need, we pulled those out of next year's budget. And if there's money at the end of this year, just like we've done every other year, we'll purchase, yes, Steve, yes, we'll purchase that that vehicle in this year rather than leave it in the budget for next year. So we pulled that money out. We were able to take a look at some of the S R two money, and we we were able to align it with some of our technology and um the technology requirements. We were able to align that and tie that in with COVID money. So we were able to pull a chunk of that money out of next year's budget as well and make it applicable. And I know, Pat, you're going to tell me if I'm saying anything wrong here.
Yeah, I will.
Because I want to make sure we're clear on this, it may and and have that applied towards some of that technology as well. There's also um some funds available to us now that we're going to be able to use. And I know, Steve, you've seen us do this year after year, to pay upfront for some of our sped money, uh, especially some of the collaboratives, and we've done that, like last year, we weren't able to because we didn't have the funds available to us. But this year we will. And so that means that some of the funds that we had set aside for sped for next year, we will be able to pay upfront this year. And it's very specific. It's not just general, any sped, you know, any sped funds. It's very specific to our collaboratives. It's very specific uh to what a regional school district uh can do. So I think that Pat's done a really good job of maximizing that for us. So that we were, we took that out of the budget um a- as well to to actually pay forward this year from funds this year, even though it's for next year's services. The other thing that we looked at, uh, and I know that we've said this so many times, we've tried so hard to work through natural attrition wherever possible and however that looks. Um, and and a lot of times it means that it might be, um, we might lose a position through natural attrition, but it might not be that specific position. For example, um, we might have somebody for, uh, uh, just hypothetical, we might have somebody that that is tenures resignation for retirement for, let's say, physical education. Well, that's not a position we can cut, but we might be able to cut somewhere, somebody somewhere else and have that position come over here. And so um we 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 played that out a couple of times as well. So at the end of everything, because we had our last final meeting this morning to wrap the whole thing up, and we feel very comfortable moving forward and saying, yes, we are done. It's going to mean six position cuts rather than the eleven we had initially planned. And that's only because we've got the COVID money coming forward. We were able to work around it, and we'll just, if we can just put that up, and I believe I sent that a note around to you that explained some specifics earlier today to say this is what it looks like. So Alita, if you can just bring that up, I would appreciate that. So the cuts kind of come down to um one F T E at Florence Sawyer, one at Luther Burbank, uh, one at Mary Rollinson, two at the high school, and one at Central Office. Um, the Florence Sawyer and Luther Burbank are in fact the I T S positions. So in essence, we're cutting that particular program. We had looked at other programs across the district to say, you know, could could we look at something else, or does this make the most amount of sense? We looked at everything. I mean, you know that we looked at everything from libraries to some elementary programs, to some middle school programs, to high school numbers and classrooms. I mean, we looked at everything. And the I T S for us seemed to be one of the neatest ways in terms of cleanliness for cutting those positions. Now, those people that are currently in those positions will go into another position within the school district, but the I T S position will not be backfilled. So that's where those come from. Um, the high school is, those two there are um uh basically um just natural attrition that we are not going to backfill. Um, and in one case, it was a position that we, somebody we just had that's moving um moving away from the area, and so that was a natural cut for us. Central Office is a technology, an I T S position. Uh, again, that was a resignation we hadn't seen coming. Um, so that wasn't on our radar at all. So all of these things all kind of put together, when we sat down and came to the end of it, we feel comfortable with this. We feel the impact is minimal to our students and to our staff, and I feel that we've done a really, really, really good job with this. And so that's where we sit right now. Um, people that uh have needed to be notified have been notified, and uh so we're ready to move forward. So Alita, thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. So um, any additional questions for, I mean, this is just so the tail end of the budget, and we said that we would wrap it up at this particular meeting, and that's really what we're doing right now, just wrapping it up. It's been a long, long, long season.
Um, Mike?
Uh, thank you for sharing that out, and I apologize if I missed this. I had to step away, but um when the budget was presented to us, um, we were sort of left with um you know, six, six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in unspecified cuts, which translated to eleven positions. This is now six positions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm wondering if there's a dollar amount attached to it?
Not that I would bring it forward. I don't have that at the tip of my tongue tonight, Mike, because um you know, when we were looking at it today, you know, we were looking at, for example, um, just as an example, we know that we will be able to put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards our sped, for example, right? We know that each of those positions, um, the uh the I T S positions are about a hundred and ten thousand dollars each. So, uh, you know, we were looking at that bigger, broader picture, and that's where, and then, and then when we were able to pull the technology out, the vehicles out, the those were like, the, I think the vehicles, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was just over a hundred thousand. So that's.
A little under, actually, but.
Yeah, so it the those, so that's how it all kind of pulled together.
Thank you.
Great question.
Other questions for Brooke? Seeing none. Brooke, I just want to thank you and Pat and Todd, your whole team. This is never a fun time, and it was even more challenging um this year with with everything else that was going on. And um I I know that I've heard from members of the committee that they want to, I I think it sounds like be more proactive uh with the towns and um making them aware of the impact that these cuts have on um the quality of education. Um, you know, somebody, one member made the comment that the 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 town set high expectations um for the level of education and the services and and things of that nature. Well, it comes at a cost. And if you look at other districts, and I've been watching um many districts, even after this awful COVID year, have um had increases in their budget. Um, I I I can say double because our increase was what, two percent? So you're talking four percent, five percent. So uh moving forward, um, and this is an area, as I go off the committee, that I'm very interested in uh supporting in the town of Lancaster, just building the understanding of what it means when you underfund um and um put us in this position. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. I I think I want to thank our team too, because this this truly is a team effort. And I think too, we want to also, Pat mentioned Michelle Cody tonight because she's leaving us, and um she's, she has sat for years with us now, for hours and hours and hours as we've worked through these budgets, and uh, so we just want to wish her well too. She was, she was a great team member, and we're going to really miss her. But thank you to all of our administrators, because I'll tell you, this is this is not done in a dark room with just like two or three people. This has always been our full team that has worked this through, and that, even again today, you know, we were in and out of meetings as we were pulling everybody together. Does this make sense? As, you know, because we really had so many different options, and to go back and say, this is the one that we feel that we can live with the most. And so I am so appreciative of the team spirit that lives on in our administrative team. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Okay, um, if there are no objections, I would like to move to committee reports. Uh, no report from Budget and Warrant. Is that correct, Mr. Rubenstein? Correct, no report. Personnel, Mary?
So Personnel met on um April fourteenth and approved minutes um and worked on the handbook. We saw the fruits of that today. Uh, Personnel met on April twen- twenty-seventh, approved the minutes of the fourteenth. Anne Marie Stoika was with us. We discussed interim superintendent position. Um, today, we met again uh and approved the minutes of April twenty-seventh and discussed um the interim superintendent position, if it's going, if it is needed, depending on when the new superintendent would start. And we will have one more meeting, because we love to have meetings, but um, no, it's it's on May seventh, uh, nine o'clock. We will be approving the minutes from um today's Personnel Subcommittee um and meeting, and you know, it's, it'll be a huge farewell um for Kathy Cody at uh nine o'clock on Friday morning.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Policy, Leah, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Communication, no report, Mike?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Building Committee, Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I just want to preface my report by um giving the committee fair warning that if my experience in a school building project is any example to live by, um, I'm giving you fair warning that these reports that you're going to be getting are going to start getting bigger and longer and more expansive as time goes on, because now that we've entered into this next module, uh, there's going to be a lot of information that's going to be forthcoming, and I hearken back to my days in my former district. I was listening to my treasurer from the city of Lawrence, just go on and on ad nauseam about our school building projects. So be forewarned, it's coming. But as far as the the report this evening is concerned, um, we haven't met since the seventh, so I want to bring the committee and anybody watching up to speed that on the set, what, excuse me, the fourteenth of April, the Board of Directors at the Mass School Building Soc- uh, the MSBA uh voted unanimously seven-zero to move our district along with uh Woodman Hansen and Tri County Book Tech into the next phase, which is the feasibility study phase. So we are now up to speed with the feasibility, and we are going to be proceeding with that at this time. Uh, the committee did meet on the twenty-eighth of April. Uh, we did formulate a Subcommittee consisting of a select board member, book from Bolton, Mr. Robert Sikansky, Mr. Kent Fromer from uh Lancaster, and Scott Gibson of Bolton, and our own Pat Rooney, as a a selection Subcommittee. At this point, uh, we are somewhat under the gun to get our RFP slash RFS, which is Request for Proposal, Request for Services, out, I believe by the nineteenth of this month uh for purposes of securing the services of an OPM, which is an owner's project manager. So we are moving briskly at this point. Um, we did also formulate uh another committee, it's going to be Committee Outreach Committee. Uh, Ms. uh Viverito and Ms. Cohen of our committee are going to be on that, along with Ms. Early, Ms. Bailey of this, of the, of the School Building uh Subcommittee. And uh the superintendent made a recommendation some time ago that perhaps it might be something that we might want to look at, and this is for you, Mr. Horish, that uh the uh Community Outreach Program might be one, we may want to marry that with your Communication Subcommittee, because there's going to be a lot of information forthcoming, and there's going to be a lot of opportunities for people to give public input on regards to this project. So other than that, that is it, and um I'm, we're meeting again on the twelfth, excuse me, we're having a meeting on the twelfth to uh perhaps vote on a uh Request for Proposal or Request for Services for the feasibility study.
Thank you. Uh, Dear Jay, Elaine?
Yes, thank you. Um, we met on April twelfth, and we are um starting goal-setting, which we did in the form of something called Essential Questions, which Elizabeth Bendler from Lancaster gave a wonderful presentation about, um, but I'm going to boil it down into one sentence, um, which some of our educators might be familiar with. Um, and that is even more important than finding the right answers is asking the right questions. Um, so that's what we're working on. We are going to take a little break, um, mostly because um I'll be chairing the next school committee meeting. Um, and our vice chair is a also a public school teacher in another district, so we're going, um, probably going to meet again early June.
Very good. Thank you. Oh. How cute are your kids, Mike? I don't know, I thought Elaine's kids were cute, but yours.
They're just props for sympathy, that's all.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's working. Um, Audit Advisory, Rich?
Uh, we have not met since uh we all got together. We're finally a full committee, as reported last time. Where um I just got an email from from Pat today, our esteemed uh Finance Director, that she is processing a management letter of some form. I don't think it's a final one, so we're looking for something substantial, which it seems like is in the works, so that we can meet and discuss something medium, provide our oversight and uh and counsel.
Very good. Thank you so much. Um, okay. Um, items for the next and our future agendas. So, like I said, this was supposed to be the um, although there is a uh a June second and sixteen, oh, that was from the olden days, I think. There are meetings in there, but that's the new calendar. Um, so I think that we talked about, well, it's not my, so Brooke, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'll want to just quickly update folks, um, you know, for example, the Administrator's Handbook, uh, there is a a nice draft done of it and that kind of thing. So I think I'm just going to want to update the school committee, because it'll be my last meeting, so I'll just want to uh kind of bring some, some things to closure uh at the next school committee meeting. So um I I'm not exactly sure what the agenda item would be called at this point in time, but I just know that I'd like to to bring several of those kinds of just loose ends uh to the table.
So I know we mentioned some other things for the nineteenth, the finalists for the superintendency, a decision about the organizational meeting, um, whether to, oh, Todd, go ahead.
Just a review of the District Improvement Plan. So Martina and I will just, it won't be anything really new at all, because we're, our proposal will be to carry it through another year, but we'll just review that um with the folks, and then, you know, look, either look for a vote um either that night or, you know, on the June second meeting, either is fine.
Okay. Any other things, Alita, did we mention? Anything else you picked up as we, oh, Amy, go ahead.
I was just wondering, maybe this is a question for Mary, do we need to talk about the regional agreement at all? Where where does that stand? Forgive me if uh.
No, so, no, no. Um, so a- at this point, um, I I did um go to and finally made contact with some consultants, and.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we?
I shouldn't do this.
Item, so that you can bring.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's what I meant.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Mary's, this is Mary's heart, and so she's been working so hard on this for the past year, and she's got a lot of good stuff to report, so, but I think it warrants an agenda item.
Fine.
Thank you. Um, let me see, and I think, anything else? Oh, Leah, go ahead.
Did you get the E and D vote?
Oh, no, I will probably, Alita's got it. Do you have that on the E and D? Yep, she's got it. Great, anything else? Okay, well, if you think of things, you can email Elaine, and she will be steering the ship of state next week. So, okay, so at this point, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session. to go into executive session at eight twenty-eight PM pursuant to MGL.
I think Elaine has her hand up.
Yes, Elaine?
Yeah, not, not, not so fast there. I know you like a short meeting, so I will keep it brief.
We suck at it tonight. It's eight thirty.
Um but I, I still want to acknowledge you. Um I left something on your porch of the meeting, so if you have not discovered it's probably best opened after the meeting anyway. Uh so look for that. But um, no, I ju, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you. Um, I wasn't too sure what to make of you at first. Years ago when I joined the committee. Uh, I, I wa, I wasn't sure what to make of you. Um but it has been a privilege to work with you over my three years. Um and you've had six on the committee. Um and to, to be your partner for the last two years. Um, you were, you have always been there for me to talk me down from several cliffs that I have been on. Um and then you know what? The next phone call, the next week, the roles would be reversed and I would be talking you down from the cliffs. Um and we kind of went on like that for the last two years. Um it hasn't been an easy couple of years. That's an, an understatement. Um but you've always given a hundred percent, um even more than that at times. Um, and I've just always had complete confidence that your words and your actions were always about what was best for the students and the staff of our district. So I said I would keep it brief, so I just want to thank you for your leadership um and your commitment and for your friendship.
Now, I'm all choked up. Thank you so much. And, and um, you know, I'm going to say something before we adjourn, but um I, I just think and Brooke captured it. I, I think you've been such a great partner for me and the voice of reason. Um, and seeing another perspective. And I mean, it's been a crazy. I, I, I mean, defi, it defies definition what this group has experienced in the last almost two years. And um in hindsight, we really did a, a good job as a committee, I think. But I really appreciated your partnership in leading this and I, I felt many times that we were really co-chairs more than Chair and Vice Chair. So, so thank you. Um, and you know, I live in kind of a shady over fifty-five neighborhood, so I, right after this meeting, I'm going to run out and make sure that there have been no um geriatric porch pirates. Um so, but thank you so much and, and we'll talk, we'll talk.
I'm, I'm sure I'm going to wind up in the police blotter for slowly coming around this neighborhood. Where does she live again? I know, I, I know, I remember where she lives. I know it when I'll see it. So I was kind of creeping through the neighborhood.
I'm going to start the, the Eagle Ridge chat and see, because they probably have eyes on you, okay?
Totally.
All right. Um, so if there are nothing further at this point, I would like to move that we go to executive session at eight thirty-one PM pursuant to MGL, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Review of an executive session minutes of February tenth, Session A and B, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, Session A and B, April seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, in accordance with open meeting law, uh MGL, um Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty Two F G. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares regarding the matter of Maria Del Rosario versus MRSD Regional School District at L docket number one eight eight five C D zero one eight nine nine. Executive session to include Superintendent Clutchy and District Legal Counsel Attorney Kevin Freitag. The committee will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. So I would need a, a second.
Second.
Steve Rubenstein, seconds. Um, oh, hi Kevin. Oh, what? Okay. Thank God you're here. What did I do wrong?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Kevin Freitag, um Counsel for the District. I just need to hear you make the declaration that you believe discussing the litigation matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the district. Yep, so you just, you read if the Chair so declares, I just need you to declare that.
I declare that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I do declare. Okay, so now we have a second and we will vote to go into executive session. I vote yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Um, Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah, okay? Thank you. We are in executive, oh Brooke, yes. You got, Brooke, you're muted.
Sorry, my apologies.
We have adjourned executive session and have returned to open session. And item 11 on our agenda is regarding the case of regarding Maria Del Rosario versus the Neshoba Regional School District at Al. Docket number 1885 CV01. Docket number 1885 CV 01899. At this time, I would move to pay the judgment in the case of Maria Del Rosario versus the Neshoba Regional School District at Al. Docket number 1885 CV 01889 in the amount of $15,897.35. Can I have a second please?
Second.
Mike Horace seconded. Any questions or comments? Steve?
I think it should be understood that this is what we're paying tonight is not a judgment of the original complaint, but is rather a judgment to pay the lawyer his fees and that lawyer happens to be a past chairman of this school district as well as a past selectman of the town of Stone.
So noted. Okay, so if there are no more questions or comments, I will call the vote.
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yeah.
Me? Yes. Okay, so before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to very briefly give my most heartfelt appreciation and thanks to this entire committee. This has been an unbelievable couple of years. And even in the course of my career as an educator, I don't think I've ever encountered some of the things that we have encountered this year. Your dedication, your hard work, all the extra time we met, all the thoughtful discourse, and the work we did on behalf of the district. It makes me very proud to have been a part of it. And I'm also very appreciative of all the help and support that you have given me as the chair over the past two years. I really appreciate the critical friendships that we've had and the encouragement and again, all the work that you all have done. This past six years has been very valuable to me as an experience and I just feel so grateful to have been able to be a part of the Neshoba Regional School District. And so thank you for everything and I wish you the best moving forward and I hope to find little niches in the town of Lancaster where I can be of help to the schools. So if there is, is there anything else for the good of the order? Mary?
Of course, I'm muted. Steve, did you want to say anything too or?
Well, kind of yes.
Well, so do you want to go first?
No, why don't, why don't you go first?
There's no going after me.
Oh, all right. As, as, as the old man of this group and soon to be the senior member of this school committee, having now completed four years with this, with this organization, I would like to say two, couple things. Number one, Elaine. Elaine, when you came on, I had a picture of you. And I have to admit that very pleasantly, my opinion and picture of you has changed significantly over the last couple of years.
Yes, you were not shy in sharing that initial. I would like to.
However, however, you will remember that I did say that you should be elected the vice chair unanimously when you first ran for that, for that lofty office. And I'd just like to say that I, I think you're fantastic. Many things have been said about both you and Kathy this evening, but I think you're fantastic and I look forward to seeing the next step of your life and what's going on there. And I really wish you well in the future. Kathy, what can I say about you? I always wait till after nine o'clock in the morning to call you because I know I don't want to disturb your, you and your husband early in the morning. I know that now that you won't be going to school committee meetings anymore, your husband will be missing out on his chili dogs and I hope that sometime you do feel sorry for him and get them for him or let him go get them for himself. Kathy, it's been a great two years with you as chairman, as chairperson. And what else can I, can I say? I look forward to the weather getting a little warmer and we can do what we planned.
We're looking.
Having, having an occasional lunch together at the Bolton Bean, which is about halfway between York where you live and your over 55 community and where I live in my over 55 community. It just so shows we're getting older, but you know what? Just like wine, we improve with age. And Kathy, you have a great life ahead of you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much.
So Steve, yeah, that was wonderful. So I don't know whether I'm going to be, I'm going to try to do this right. I'm going to try to share something on, I haven't done this before, so you're all being patient with me because I need to share something on my screen first. Would you like to see my screen? Let me see.
Nice.
Okay, so, so this is, I didn't know how long it would take to get this up, but I just want to say that remember when we talked about should we have a theme song and, and Mike Horace said The Love Boat, remember? And he sang a little bit of that. So I want you to know that my plan was to have Amy play it, to have Mike lead us in singing it. And yet I've watched a lot of things on Zoom of people singing and it takes, we would all need to have like pitch pipes or we would all need to have keyboards because when people even singing Happy Birthday, if people aren't singing in the same key, it's, it's just awful. So, so I, now I have to tell you that this song is not in my range. And so you're all, you're going like, oh, good. Wait, so there's something else I have to do. So what I did is I took the lyrics to The Love Boat, then I wrote about life and this is, this goes to Kathy and Elaine. This is dedicated to you. Now, it should have, this would be bad if I can't find how to do this and.
Maybe Mike, maybe Mike could sing it for us.
Well, I have it right here. I just have to go to videos. It was all set up before and our meeting kind of took.
I would like, I would like Steve to do background vocals, please, maybe harmonize.
No, you don't want that.
Oh, I do.
Okay. Did I, did I, did you like my voice on that? So I'm not supposed to say who that was, but thank you for singing along. So that was, it was nice to make all of you smile, but you know, there is, life is awaiting you and with all the accolades, I just wanted to add this, so much to look forward to and how much we thank both of you for your leadership. So you see now, Steve, why I had to have this last.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Nothing could follow that.
Yep. That was such a treat and Mike, I think you're wasting your time in education. You need to get a good agent and start getting out there and pursuing a musical career.
Think you're on to something, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it was Captain Stube or Isaac. I wasn't really sure who was singing.
Thank you so much, all of you. I mean, that was so special. Mary, if you could send me the words, that would be great. I would love that.
I think that definitely should be the school committee theme song of just like, do your work, you can do this because life's waiting for you on the other side.
I mean, think of it. I mean, go to the AMA, the MAS C conference and have a session on, on the school committee theme song and then have a little workshop so they can write their own. I mean, I mean, you might, this like could open doors for this committee, just saying. So, well, you know, I joke a lot of times about some of the best times of this pandemic have been spent with you folks and it wasn't really a joke. I think that we dealt with a lot of difficult things and, but we have had some fun. My biggest regret is that we couldn't have, you know, ended the year at least, meeting together because it makes such a difference, but everybody did such a great job virtually. And again, thanks so much. These are great memories that I have of all of you and this work and just be well and take care. And now, did we adjourn? We didn't adjourn, did we? So that's on the video. I think that's awesome.
It's all on YouTube.
I'm so glad that that's on the video.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn at 9:20 PM?
So moved.
Steve moved, second, and Amy seconded. Okay. Aleah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Okay, so before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to very briefly give my most heartfelt appreciation and thanks to this entire committee. This has been an unbelievable couple of years. And even in the course of my career as an educator, I don't think I've ever encountered some of the things that we have encountered this year. Your dedication, your hard work, all the extra time we met, all the thoughtful discourse and the work we did on behalf of the district. It makes me very proud to have been a part of it. And I'm also very appreciative of all the help and support that you have given me as the chair over the past two years. I really, I appreciate the, the critical friendships that we've had and the encouragement and again, all the work that you all have done. This past six years has been very valuable to me as an experience and I just feel so grateful to have been able to be a part of the Neshoba Regional School District. And so thank you for everything and I wish you the best moving forward and I hope to find little niches in the town of Lancaster where I can be of help to the schools. So if there is, is there anything else for the good of the order?